One minute to air, 30 seconds to livestream.
Happy Thankful Tuesday, everyone. Welcome to our City Council Work Session here on Tuesday, November 22, 2022, in the Bull City, in our City Hall chambers. We welcome those who are joining us here in person, and we also welcome those who are joining us via the Internet. I now turn to our clerk and ask her to call the role.
Mayor O'Neal.
I am present.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Halsey Hyman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
And Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Seems like we were just here last night. Oh, we were just here last night. We were just here last night, everybody. So, we're here today. Of course, we're going to do things a little differently. I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Protem, who will lead us through most of the agenda. I will handle a presentation from the Police Department, and several of our other councilwomen will be handling other presentations that we have today. So, Mayor Protem, take it away.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Your Honor, to my honorable colleagues all in the chamber, those watching remotely. Welcome to our meeting today. At this time, I'm going to yield to my colleagues for any announcements by councilmembers. I'll look to my right. Councilmember Caballero.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and I hope everyone has a safe holiday in the next few days. I was in need of two excused absences from my colleagues for Tuesday, January 3. Typically, our meeting would be that second, but because New Year's falls on that Sunday, we are closed on the second. So, January 3, 2023, that sounds very much like the future, and then Thursday's work session, January 5, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. We'll take that up after announcements. Looking to my left, Councilmember Halsey Hyman. Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. I just want to say again to the residents of Durham, to my colleagues and to city employees, just please have a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, anyone else? Councilmember Williams.
Briefly, I just finished speaking with a group of youngsters, young men at Burton Elementary School, the King's program, and they are going to be going back and watching this on YouTube, and I promised them that I would shout them out. So, kudos to you guys for being amazing young men and the integrity that you have with your academics. Keep up the great work.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Colleagues, you've heard a request from our honorable colleague, Councilmember Caballero, for an excused absence for the dates January 3, regular City Council meeting, January 3, and work session on January 5. I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
I hear a motion from Councilmember Freeman and a second from Councilmember Williams. All will indicate agreeance by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Share the opinion. The vote is unanimous. You are excused. Councilmember Caballero, travel safe.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Moving on now, I'm going to recognize our city manager's office, or city manager in our city manager's absence. I'm going to recognize Deputy City Manager Bo Fergens for any consent, for any priority items by the city manager. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor. Mayor Protem and members of council, the city manager's office does have two priority items for the work session this afternoon. Both of these relate to presentations you will receive today. Agenda item number three, the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2022, has a presentation associated with it. Also, agenda item number 12, 2022 Third Quarter Crime Report has a presentation associated with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. At this time, I'll yield to our city attorney for any priority items she may have. Good afternoon, counselor.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem. The city attorney's office does have one priority item this afternoon. We would like to request that city council hold a closed session at the conclusion of all regular business today. This is for the purpose of attorney-client consultation in a matter in active litigation. The motion will be to hold a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143 318.11A3 for attorney-client consultation concerning the handling or settlement in the case as follows. Willie Wambel versus City of Durham and George Miller Jr., Public Administrator of the Estate of Lorenzo Leather Sr. That is a Middle District federal case.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. We'll take that up after we finish our priority items. At this time, I'm going to yield to our city clerk for any priority items she may have. Good afternoon, Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Protem. The city clerk's office has no priority items today.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, you've heard a request from our city attorney to move on a motion to go into closed session at the finish of regular, at the conclusion of regular business of our agenda today. Madam Attorney, for the record, would you just read the words to the motion one more time, then I'll ask for money to move as read?
I will. I will, Mayor Protem. The motion is to hold a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143 318.11A3 for attorney-client consultation concerning the handling or settlement of the case of Willie Wambel versus City of Durham and George Miller Jr., Public Administrator of the Estate of Lorenzo Leather Sr. That is a Middle District of North Carolina federal case, filed at 17 CV 908.
Move this red.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilmember Freeman and a second from her honor. I'm going to ask all those who are in agreement would indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Share the opinion. The vote is unanimous. We will go into closed session after completion of our regular agenda today. Thank you. At this time now, I'm going to read in for the record our administrative consent items and all items on the agenda that we will be taking up today. Here begins the reading. Under Administrative Consent Items, City Clerk's Office, item number one, Durham Open Space and Trails Commission Appointment, under the Finance Department, item number two, October 2022 Bid Report, under Departmental Items, Audit Services Department, item three, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, ACFR, for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2022. That is a presentation. Item number four, Durham Fire Department Response Times Performance Audit, October 2022, under Budget and Management Services Department, item number five, FY 2023 24 Budget Development Schedule, under the City Manager's Office, item number six, Contract with Triangle Community Foundation, TCF, as fiscal agent for We Are the Ones.
I'd like to pull that, please.
Item number six.
Yes, please.
Councilmember Johnson? That item is pulled. Under Community Development Department, item number seven, Enter Local Agreement with the Durham Public School Board of Education to Support the Promoting Academic Learning Program.
I'd like to pull that, Mayor Protem.
As do I. On the General Services Department, item number eight, Lease and License Agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC.
I'd like to pull that item.
At 138 East Pettigrew Street. Pulled by Councilmember Freeman. Item number nine, Durham Transit Center Improvements Project Construction Manager at Risk Contract for Preconstruction Services with SEMAT WC Construction, a joint venture.
Like to pull that.
All right. Item number 10, Durham Station Transit Center Improvements Project Design Contract with Perkins &amp; Will, Inc. I do not want to pull this item, but I do want to celebrate it. There was quite a windfall for us. Congressman Price announced an FTA grant of north of $10 million to refurbish our transit center downtown. I'm also very pleased to see that a local, well, a national architect with local footprint in mooring Perkins &amp; Will is going to be leading us in the design phase. And I also would encourage my colleagues and members of the public to gawk, as I did, at the schematic design concepts for the station. Very impressive. I don't know if it will ultimately look like that, but the design concepts are certainly very attractive. This is a much-needed work. So, congratulations on that. And Office of Economic and Workforce Development, item 11, Amendment to the U.S. Department of Labor, PY 2022 through 2024 Grant Project Ordinance, number 15997, for federal grant to execute City of Durham Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, WIIOA Employment Training Program.
Mayor Protem, I don't want to pull it. I do want to ask staff to at least let us know when we might see a plan around that.
Item number 12, 2022 Third Quarter Crime Report, and that will be a presentation. Under Public Works Department, item number 13, Utility Extension Agreement with Piedmont Patterson Place Owner LLC to Serve the Piedmont at Patterson Place Apartments. Item number 14, Contract ST-316C, Request for Qualifications for Inspections for Bridge Repairs 2023, and I'm pulling that. Item number 15, Contract ST-326 Unpaved Roads Improvement 2023. Item number 16, Contract ST-324 Street Repairs and Repaving 2023. Item number 17, Contract ST-316 Bridge Repairs 2023, I'm pulling that. Item number 18, Contract ST-325 Pavement Preservation 2023. Item number 19, Contract Amendment Number One for ST-318C Inspections for Construction Projects. Under Technology Solutions Department, item number 20, Contract with Foray Technologies LLC for Enhancement to Durham Police Department's Digital Evidence Management System. Item number 21, Contract with Cyber Synergy Consulting Group LLC for Completion of Last Mile Fiber Construction. Item number 22, Contract with Lexair Electronics Sales Corporation for Completion of Last Mile Fiber Construction. Item number three, Contract with GNS Communications and Technical Services, Inc., for Completion of Last Mile Fiber Construction. Under Presentations, Budget and Management Service Department, item number 24, FY 2223 First Quarter Financial Report. That is a presentation. From City, under City Manager's Office, item number 25, The Affordable Housing Deep Dive Presentation on Planning and the Development Process. Under Public Hearings, from the City-County Planning Department, item number 26, Consolidated Annexation, Mockingbird Lane and Sharon Road. Item number 27, Consolidated Annexation, Crescent Towns. Item number 28, Consolidated Annexation, National Heritage Academies, Oak Grove Charter. Item number 29, Permanent Closing of Fontanelle Street. Item 30, Permanent Closing of a Portion of Gilbert Street. And for Citizens Matters, to be heard at 1:00. I have two citizens signed up, Eloise Johnson and James Chavis. That ends the ending, that ends the reading of the agenda. Mr. Manager, I have pulled items, items number six, seven, eight, nine, 14, and 17. And, you concur? And presentations have already been indicated. All right, colleagues, that gives us our on-ramp to get to work. I'm going to go ahead and dispose with the pulled items first in order, and then we will start our presentations. Actually, I need to, did we, Caballero, did we do your excused absence?
Yes.
We did, okay, all right. That's right. Citizens comments, my bad. Thank you. All right. Citizens Matters to be heard at 1:00 at first. We'll first hear from Eloise Johnson. Good afternoon, ma'am. If you'll join us at the podium and just state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes. We're glad you're with us.
Good afternoon, councilmen. My name is Eloise Johnson. I live at 1115 North Driver Street, Durham, North Carolina, and I'm here about my concern. Why Mr. Allen, a black man, has been a part of parks and recreation for more than 10 years and has worked with senior citizens at Holden, and he has not gotten a full-time position working with seniors? Who has been, we have been without leadership for two and a half months. And I would like to know why Mr. Allen cannot get this position, this full-time position. And he is a young black man. He has the experience. And we need leadership because majority of our senior programs have shut down. And we need the activities back. So, my concern once again is why Mr. Allen can't get this position so that we can get our program back to full swing? Because right now, everything has just about gone. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson, for being with us today. Mr. James Chavis, good afternoon, sir. If you'll come to the podium and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you for being with us.
Good afternoon to all you city councilmen. I haven't seen in a long time. And one, I'm definitely up here to talk to, is our Councilman Williams, who had made a promise to me and the PAC six months ago with his project that he just came aboard, that he was supposed to have been meeting with me and others to get it started. But it just came to my attention by another member to get this started. And I told that person, I'm coming here first because the person that came to us was Councilman Williams over six months ago and supposed to have been coming back with us to help get this party running. Well, I tell you what, he has been ducking me. And I got proof because I got a councilman who I've been trying to get her to get him to call me, set up a date. He has not done it. But all of a sudden, he gonna get Ms. Stansler to come and have a meeting about the project and what the project is going to be all about and the money. You're looking kind of strange. Well, I hope she had told you I was coming up here because I told her when I had the meeting, I was coming up here because he was supposed to have came back to. He made a promise in the PAC meeting, and I held him accountable. And I told him then, I would be looking forward to starting this project with this amount of money so that we can get up and running beforehand and not waiting for the last minute. Now, your credibility and my credibility may be different, but I'm volunteering my time trying to get others and had been trying to get others, and we lost one of our major players, Mr. Jesse Gibson, who was looking forward to help get this project started because he had an area that he wanted to get involved in, but he has gone on. So, I got to take up his work, and I don't mind. But, Mr. Williams, I'm asking you here today, are you ready to put your boots to the ground out there with me? Are you ready just for your staff to do it? I'm asking you. Can you give me an answer?
Mr. Chavis, the time is yours. At the expert, you stop the clock for a second. At the ending of your three minutes, if a councilmember decides to respond, they will.
Okay, thank you for calling me. I didn't mean to.
Yes, sir.
But I do want him to answer that because I'm volunteering my time, he's getting paid. And I know he a very busy man, but I also got two people that y'all councilmen sent to me Saturday to set aside some time to meet with them, okay? I got one tomorrow, and I got one next week. So, I'm not turning down anything to help improve our community. I'm volunteering my time to help keep improving my model. So, I would like y'all and others to do the same. Thank you.
Mr. Chavis, thank you so much for being with us. Councilmember Williams, do you want to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Chavis. I don't know what you're talking about. I've been over there several times, and I haven't sent anyone to see you. You haven't called me, and I will make sure I reach back out to you again as I have in the past.
Thank you, Councilmember. We will, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I do want to just acknowledge in the passing of Mr. Jesse Gibson. I meant to mention that on Monday, and I want to send my sincerest condolences to his family and to the PAC. I know that it was a huge loss in his passing. Thank you.
Councilmember Hyman.
So, Ms. Chavis, I had my intern several times reach out because I'm trying to meet with all the PACs. So, and she was not be able to get. I did meet with PAC too, but I'm trying to meet as somebody who's been on for seven months. I wanted to get to all the PACs. So, we'll reach out again, but we have been reaching out to meet with all the PACs, meet, need to meet with them. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. Colleagues, at this time, we'll turn now to our pulled items that being the end of Citizens Matters that I have in front of me. And we will begin with item number six, Contract with Triangle Community Foundation, TCF, as fiscal agent for We Are the Ones, WATO. And that item was pulled by Councilmember Johnson. I'll yield to my colleague.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, and thank you, Bertha. I wondered if you could, if you could just give us a little bit of background on how the initial partnership with Cypress Fund led to this sort of dissolving and new partnership with an additional organization? And also was wondering why we were granting the entire $250,000 to TCF when we had, in the initial agreement, we had only given, I think, $120,000 or $150,000 or something to Cypress Fund that we were going to do it in chunks? So, if you just give us some more background, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, Bertha Johnson, Deputy City Manager. So, what, and first, I want to say that the person we've been working with, Adele Ortiz, was not able to be here today representing We Are the Ones. She's out of the country. We do have someone from Triangle Community Foundation on a Zoom call for questions about the contract. So, according to the folks that I spoke with there, Cypress Fund was based out of the state, and they were working out of the state. They wanted, when they started talking about the program, there were concerns about some of the money leaving Durham and them working with other partners outside of Durham. This is what I included in agenda item, which is what was shared with me. They went back to Triangle Community Foundation, and this is really their fiscal sponsor because we could not contract directly with We Are the Ones, obviously, because they're not a nonprofit organization. So, they had to find another sponsor, fiscal sponsor, and that is the sponsor they selected. And I wish they were here to give you more insight into that relationship. I was not involved in those discussions. The original amount was $250,000, as it is here. We initially paid Cypress Fund $100,000 as a down payment. They returned it to us. They never paid those funds to We Are the Ones. They returned the check to us.
Thank you. So, initially, we gave them $100,000 as a down payment, but now we're giving the entire $250,000 to Triangle Community Foundation. What's the differing rationale?
No, no. The original contract was $250,000. In the contract, under payments, there's a schedule of how you get paid. The initial down payment was $100,000. They were always going to get the full $250,000. They were to invoice us monthly. In this contract, it's the same. We'll give them $100,000 upfront, and they will invoice us monthly based on the work that has been performed. So, we just kept the same terms of the payment. With nonprofit organizations, usually, we discuss with them what their financial capacity is, and we set up those payments based on, you know, their needs in terms of how much funding they need upfront to start the program. They've already done one mini-grant process earlier in the year and awarded mini-grants, and so they had already done a lot of fundraising before they came to us, and so they had money to move forward with the first process, which is why this came later, and it wasn't something that was urgent because they were spending down the money they had already raised.
Got you. Thank you. And there was just one question I had about something in the memo, which it's unfortunate that folks aren't here to answer this because you probably don't have this information. But to my knowledge, two of the organizations that were involved in the original design team have left the partnership. But in the memo, it says that the original design team is intact. Is that the information that you were given, or do you know anything about groups leaving?
Yes, we confirm that, that the original partners, which is why we added the original partners. We added the partners in the contract, not just in the memo, so that there was change in the partners. When they sent us their monthly invoice, then we would have a conversation about the reason the partners are not continuing to be in the program. So, they are committed to those partners, and we confirm that.
Okay.
Obviously, I didn't talk to the individual partners.
Yeah. I have talked to one of the two partners that have left the program and have confirmed that they have left. So, that's something that we're going to need to get cleared up before Monday.
Absolutely.
I can follow up with you after the meeting. And if somebody from We Are the Ones could be here on Monday, that would be helpful as well.
Yes, we have a commitment for them to be here for Adele Ortiz to be here on Monday, meeting on Monday.
Thank you.
Yes. I apologize, but we did not know she was going to be out of town until the agenda had been published. And so, we wanted to make sure that at least we had this discussion, and we could take the questions back, and she will be here on Monday.
Okay, that's great. I'm just going to ask her to be on GBA on Monday so we can do that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else want, Councilmember Freeman?
I do want to just touch back on the original group, the Cypress Fund, and I think that there was some dissension around some of the non, the fact that matters, they don't live here, and they're not from here, so they don't understand how things work here. And now that they do have a local partner as a fiscal sponsor, I do feel very comfortable with this moving forward. And I do want to say, I, from everything that I've heard, I've heard great things about the mini-grant process and how it's working, and so I feel very good about this work. And I'm excited that former councilmember Pierce Freeland pulled this together, and I want to be as supportive as possible if there's any way I can be helpful. Regardless, I would like to know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else on this item? All right, colleagues, we'll now turn to pulled item number seven, Enter Local Agreement with the Durham Public School Board of Education to Support the Promoting Academic Learning Program, PAL. That item was pulled by Councilmember Hyman. I also had intended to pulling it, and I believe Councilmember Freeman was going to pull it as well. So, Councilmember Hyman will yield to you to begin.
Hi, thank you. I just have some questions in terms of, I know that the program is, it came out of the impact of COVID.
Yes, ma'am. This is, good afternoon, Karen Lotto, Assistant Director, Community Development Department. Yes, this program came out of conversations that the Community Development Department had had with the Durham Public Schools post-COVID. In part, we had received funding from the federal government for COVID response, specifically Community Development Block Grant Program. And we identified this as an area where we could utilize funds that would impact low-income students.
Thank you. So I just want some clarity on if it was based on the fact that children were losing some really good educational enrichment during the COVID period. I see that you're going to be running the program from 10:00 to 5:30 and then from 10:00 to 2:00, identified children will be, I guess, I just want some clarity. Are they being pulled out of school to attend this and then also to attend it after school?
So I am going to, we have two representatives of DPS here as resource persons. And rather than answering for them, I think it would be better if they could address that directly, if they can be made available.
Hi. Hi, yes, my name is Tracy Supera Edwards on behalf of Durham Public Schools Community Education. The students are not pulled out of school. We bring in, they get one-to-one or small group instruction while they're in class. And so that's how they are targeted during the school day. And then those students are also in the after school, in the afternoon, they're in the after-school program for the enrichment pieces. So they're not pulled out of school. They just get additional instruction.
That's why I want the clarity because it said from 10:00 to 2:00, identified students will receive the intensive. So I didn't know if they were being pulled out of their actual class or is it going to be a group-intensive enrichment? So I'm just kind of just confused about the curriculum format. And also, I'm concerned about, because honestly, the kids even need more of the enrichment during the summer. And so I think it said here that you were going to be trying to do some of this same work in the summertime, but it was based on funding available. So I would just try to put a, just like to put a plug in the fact that, you know, if these children are already behind academically, that also in the summertime, because that's, because a lot of these kids are playing catch-up because they didn't get the information that they needed while we were going through COVID. So a lot of them are playing catch-ups. So I really would love to see this program have enrichment in the summer. And then also too, in terms of how are you assessing the areas that they need enrichment in? You know, a lot of our kids are kind of behind in English and in math. So I'm just curious to what kind of curriculum assessment is being done, you know, for they to be identified to be in the program?
Yes, so we working closely with the principals at the identified schools. And so they're using the, their benchmarks and their test scores to make sure those students and what areas they need intervention and make sure that we are addressing the needs based on the scores and the teachers' recommendations and what the, and what the test scores are showing us.
And this is my last thing is that I think it's a good thing to be able to give them the extra enrichment. But I do know as a educator, sometimes children, and we just got to be creative in how we identify the kids because sometimes kids feel like they're targeted when you're kind of bringing them out and putting them in different programs. So just the creative way in making sure that everybody else in the school doesn't know that these kids are being pulled out for the extra enrichment. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Freeman, we'll yield to you.
Thank you. I appreciate councilmember Hyman asking a couple of my questions. But I, I did want to add to that, these CBD, CDBG, CV funding, is this a format that we can use going forward or is this just limited to COVID?
This is one-off funding from the COVID pandemic response. So it is, one, it is limited to funding and, two, it will, it is non-recurring.
And that was all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, colleagues. I just have a couple of questions. First off, I want to celebrate the, the maintenance and the doubling down on, on the partnership between elected bodies in the city and our, our continued partnership with DPS and making sure that our children, our youngest and most vulnerable residents and citizens have all they need. I was very excited when we first talked about PAL. My question to the, to the DPS folk are, insofar as the impacts were felt and are still being felt. And we know that our kids have a, and councilmember Hyman, I think, did an excellent job in framing the depth of the problem. I'm curious as to why all of the funds weren't exhausted with the first tranche of money?
Okay. The reason was a couple of different, couple of factors. One, a lot of the budget was, of course, directed towards staff or staffing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't hear, I'm sorry. It's a little low. Could you repeat that?
Oh, okay. I was saying that why all the funds were not used. One, at one particular school, we were not able to quite reach the enrollment number that we anticipated. So that contributed also to not needing as many staff at one of the sites. And then at the other programs, we also were able to use some of the staff on extra duty versus hiring, it was hard recruiting some staff. So recruiting some employees for the position from 10:00 to 6:00. We had ran into some challenges with that. So we were able to use some current staff to kind of help with that. So that offset, some of that had to do with the amount budgeted for the personnel issue. That's why a lot of the money, the funds.
Right, so it sounds like one was in efficiency, we could use current staff. But the inability to enroll, would, I mean, given the enormity of the need, what, why, why were we hampered with the inability to enroll? Could you say a little more about that?
So some of that has to do with the students, if they wanted to stay or the parents wanted them to stay until the end of the program time. So we were able, some, so we got creative. Some of the students were served during the day and then a big portion of it was for the afternoon piece of it. And so at, at a particular school, if the parents did not sign them up because of the afternoon piece, we were not able to do transportation home in the afternoons. And so that had an impact on the number of students at some of the schools and how many students could attend the program because they had to have transportation home.
Right, thank you for so, so much. These are never easy challenges to manage. Finally, the, the four schools that are going to be focused on now with the renewal, and I anticipate renewal of this interlocal agreement. Tell, tell me a little bit about the selection criteria. I know it was in the memo, but for the sake of the public, would you tell, say a little bit about the selection criteria? And also what lessons we, we've learned from the first tranche that we'll be employing on these schools to, to meet the most need?
So for the selection criteria, one of the things that we looked at is was also an existing after-school program at those schools. And so three of the schools for Burton, Beverly Street and Y E, and Y E Smith, we currently do not have a before and after-school program at those three schools. And W G Pearson, the program is very small. And so we wanted to give opportunities to those schools for parents to, that needed also their students to be in the after-school program at the school. That was one of the, one of the criterias that we looked at is looking at those particular schools to be able to offer something in the afternoon. Of course, they are Title I schools and we looked at how we would be able to better serve and have a greater impact on those particular schools and those students.
Thank you so much for the work y'all do and convey our, our love and appreciation to your colleagues and for securing our children and our future. That's all I have. Colleagues, item, all right. We'll move on then to item number eight, Lease and License Agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC at 1318 East Pettigrew Street. This item was pulled by councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. Thank you. My question specifically is for our attorney and just, just, just asking if it's any, anything that would prohibit us from actually tying this increase rate to inflation rather than just the flat 3%?
Councilmember, I do not know anything about that. I would like the ability to confer with the attorney who is actually working on this contract, has worked on this and discuss those issues. As, you know, Deputy City Attorney, Senior Deputy City Attorney Donna Tool is actually our lead on franchise issues and things like that. So I'd, I'd really like to be able to confer.
Just acknowledging that we don't have very many levers to increase our revenue. And this is one, just acknowledging this inflationary like increases. If there were one in five years, if we were able to tie it to inflation rather than just to a flat 3%, I think it would be more beneficial.
Understood. We will research that for you and get that information back to the council.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, councilmember. Anyone else on this item? All right, we'll move to item number nine, Durham Station Transit Center Improvements Project Construction Manager, At-Risk Contract for Pre-Construction Services with Semet, WC Construction, a Joint Venture. This item was pulled by councilmember Caballero. Now I'll yield.
Thank you. My question is just really quickly for item number nine and 10. If I'm not mistaken, that grant had a 20% match for local dollars that we won. And so I was just wondering if both of these items are, is, are based off, is based off that 20% match?
That is correct, I'm sorry. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Shawna Parker and I'm the project manager of the General Services Department. And the total funding for the, the project includes both the federal grant as well as the local match, which in the memo is identified as the 2023 Transit Fund Match.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, councilmember. Anyone else on that item? All right, we'll move to item number 14, which was pulled by me, Contract ST-316C, Request for Qualifications for Inspections for Bridge Repairs 2023. And I see staff approaching. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Tasha Johnson, Public Works Assistant Director.
Good afternoon. Good to see Tasha. Just real quick, under, in, in the memo, under alternatives, it says the city manager can choose to not approve this project. Was that supposed to be City Council?
That is the same language we've always used and.
The city manager?
It's, I'll have to confirm that.
Right. Every other memo is, is the City Council. I was just wondering if, if maybe the manager, is that, is that correct? Because if it is, I have some questions as to.
Give me just a second to review the language, please. Thank you. Yes, well, so first up, Mayor Protem, I'd probably defer to City Manager Rwanda Page to, to share her thoughts on this because I don't, I don't want to provide an interpretation of the language that, that she ultimately is, is probably going to be accountable for. Certainly, when the council adopts the budget, the city manager maintains some authority to move funds within the budget. So to the extent that this is funding that was in the approved budget, I don't know that that language is inappropriate. However, again, let me put a pin in this, summarize the question for the city manager and ask that she respond to you with her thoughts on how she'd like that.
Sure. And let me tell you, thank you so much. Let me tell you what prompts, if you look at all of our other, I mean, I've been reading these for a lot of years. I don't, I don't think I've ever seen the city manager can choose not. I mean, she's got a threshold beneath which she can spend money without our approval. But above that threshold, when it comes to us, the discretionary power ceases. And once we appropriate something to a specific item, I've, I've never seen, you know, language like this. And if you look at all the other memos, even in our package today, under alternatives, it's consistently if the city council chooses not to. Not that this is controversial anyway, and, but I'm, I'm just curious. I've, I've never seen that before. I was just wondering, was that supposed to read City Council? And if so, if this is the case, I'm curious as to, under what circumstances would she move the money? Other than for the purpose stated in here. But if, if staff would just note that and get back to me, I'd appreciate it. Get back to us.
We will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, anyone else on this item? Councilmember Freeman?
My apologies. And I, I would love to know if it's because it's competitive, because it's a competitive bid process, but no.
It's already, we're already appropriating. Appreciate that. Colleagues, anyone else? All right, colleagues, we'll now move to item number 17, which was also pulled by me, Contract, it's kind of a corollary to this item, Contract ST-316, Bridge Repairs 2023.
Yes.
All right.
Tasha Johnson, Public Works Assistant Director.
Good to see you. It's been a minute. Good to see you again. There's been a lot of talk about the, the general condition of our nation's infrastructure, bridges and roads. And of course, you know, as a policymaker, when I see that we need to do repair, I know there's that, that the basic maintenance that you need to do. But could you give us a sense of how bad or how good things are? And should we be worried about the state of these bridges that have been identified? Or is this, are we still within that safe zone, routine zone?
So thank you for the question. For the bridges maintained by the city of Durham, and we currently maintain about nine or 10 that are structures. They are inspected every two years by NCDOT. And what you see here included in this contract are the most severe items associated with them and they're called prompt item or priority items. And so these are more preventive maintenance issues. So structurally, we don't have any concerns at this point with the bridges that we maintain.
Ain't nothing gonna fall down.
Based on the last inspection report, I don't think anything should fall.
Got you. Thank you so much. Good to see you. I appreciate you. Colleagues, that ends all of the pulled items I had. And thank you for staff for your, your input and engagement with us. At this turn, at this time, with no objections, we'll return, we'll turn now to our presentations. And the first presentation we have is the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, item number three, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, ACFR, for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. And I will yield to our honorable colleague, Councilmember Williams, to lead us in this part of the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I'd say that we'll hear a presentation from our amazing staff who work all the numbers. Thank you. Looking for the end from you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Madam Mayor O'Neill, Mr. Mayor Protem, councilmembers, and Deputy City Manager Ferguson, Jermaine Bruinton, Director of the Audit Services Department. I would like to introduce Ms. April Adams. She is with, she's a partner with Cherry Beckett, LLP. Cherry Beckett is the, the city's independent, excuse me, independent external auditors. And she is going to give you a brief presentation on the city's fiscal year '22 financial statement results.
Thank you, Jermaine. Good afternoon. I will say I have a fair amount of slides here, but I'm going to move pretty, pretty quickly. A lot of the presentation is to serve as a purpose of documentation. In the past, we've issued a letter that accompanied your financial statements. And this year, we are not issuing that letter and instead relying solely on this presentation. So that's, that's the difference, the change up here. So I am excited to be here this afternoon to give you the results of the June 30th, 2020 financial statement audit. First item I wanted to cover was just that we do work for you, the, the board, the council of the city. I am the engagement partner. I am the one that signs the audit report, the opinions on behalf of the firm. Every audit that our firm conducts is also requires, as a firm requirement, our second partner to review the, the audit as well. So that's two partners of the firm looking at your report before it gets issued. With me this afternoon is Olivia Moody. She served as the Audit Manager for the engagement. So she carries out the, the audit plan and ensures that it, the work gets done and the, the plan gets executed as planned. And then also just wanted to mention that we had a senior on the engagement along with several staff. Carly was the senior that helped execute a lot of the work. All right, so what I'd like to cover with you this afternoon is, one, the results of the audit as well as the single audit. I'd like to touch on how internal controls are incorporated in our audit and how we report on those. Next would be the corrected and uncorrected misstatements, also known as adjusting journal entries associated with the audit. And then I've got a bunch of other required communications that all, that all go through as well. And then the lastly would just be any upcoming financial reporting changes, which are basically new standards that have come out from GASP that the city will have to implement in the future. All right, so the results of the audit, we have completed the audit for the city as of June 30th, 2022. We issued that report dated 11, or November 11th, 2022. We issued an unmodified opinion on those financial statements. That's also known as a clean opinion. And that is the highest level of assurance we can give you as an audit firm that your financial statements are free from material in the statement. So that's the best, the best results that you can get. Also included in your financial statements are three more reports that we issue and sign. One is the Yellow Book Report. It's an, an opinion or a report given on the internal controls over financial reporting and compliance. And then we issued two other reports related to the federal and state dollars that the city administers throughout the year. And so all three of those reports do not have any findings or deficiencies noted in them. So those are, they're also clean reports as well. All right, when it comes to the single audit, we, you guys receive a lot of different grants to administer and we go through a process to select which ones to test as major programs. And that means that each of the ones that you see here on the slide that we have tested those in with the direct and material compliance requirements for those. So there's 14 compliance requirements for each of them that we evaluate, which ones are direct and material and then test from there. So you'll see we have highway planning, the emergency solutions program, the emergency rental assistance program, and the federal transit cluster. We're all federal programs that we audited as major programs in the current year. And then on the state side, we audited the POW bill, which is the street maintenance dollars that you guys receive every year, the municipal maintenance program and the state maintenance assistance program. We issued one non-material, non-compliance finding related to the municipal maintenance grant. The, there, some of the reports were submitted. They just were submitted late. So we call it a non-material, non-compliance finding. We just have to inform you of that, but they were ultimately reported, issued as reports. As far as internal controls go for our audit, we don't opine on internal controls, but we are required to do a lot of work related to internal controls as a part of our audit. That consists of gathering all of the policies and procedures related to the significant transaction cycles. We deem those to be cash dispersments, cash receipts, payroll, and how your financial system, the financial reporting process as well. Once we obtain those, we do walk through a test of one. We take it from its initiation of. We take it from its initiation of a transaction and walk it through all the different reviews and policies that the city has in place to verify that those are the policies and procedures. And then if we decide to, as a part of our audit, to gain assurance on an area, we might actually test those controls and rely upon that as a part of our assurance. And so we do do that for cash dispersments and payroll during our audit. I am happy to let you know that we did not report any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses as a part of this audit. All right, so as far as journal entries go for the audit, we are required to report to you if any journal entries come up from the time that we were provided the trial balance to the time that we issue. There's two different types of journal entries that can happen. There's the corrected journal entries. Those are the ones that we find and the city either decides that they want to book them or the, or they're material enough where we tell them they have to book them or they'll get a different kind of opinion. We didn't have that case at all for this year. So no corrected misstatements were noted. And no uncorrected as well. So uncorrected are called what we call past adjusting journal entries. Those are journal entries that may happen that are, they are not material, but they're also not insignificant, that we might think that might be something that would be of importance for you to be aware of, but none of those existed this, this year as well. All right, so the next couple of slides talk about the qualitative aspects of accounting practices, and these are things that the audit standards have deemed important enough if they occur for us to inform you of whether they existed or not during the year of audit. The first one is to let you know if there was any significant changes in accounting policies. The city did implement GASB standard 87, which just relates to leases. And so what the standard has required the city to do is to report an asset and a liability related to each of the lease, lease transactions that you may have, either as a lessor where you're, the city is leasing something to someone else, or if the city is leasing from someone else. So both types of transactions are now recorded as assets and liabilities versus just the expenses or the revenues from those leases in the past. The next topic is related party transactions. So throughout our audit, we are looking and inquiring about related party transactions and ensuring either they, whether they exist, that they were done in accordance with accounting policies and at arm's length or otherwise. And so we, we did not become aware of any significant related party transactions as a result of our audit, so there were no transactions to test. We are also required to look for significant unusual transactions. And so we inquired about that throughout the audit, kept our eyes open, but we're not, did not see or come across any significant or unusual transactions during the audit. Also included in the city's financial statements are a significant number of significant estimates. I've listed them here in the presentation. The biggest ones that you'll come across are related to the retirement benefits of your employees. So that's your, the pension, as well as the other post-employment benefits, which are typically healthcare and dental insurance for those. And then you've also got a landfill liability of the cost of closing that landfill in the future, depreciation expense on your fixed assets or capital assets, your allowance for doubtful accounts for all of the different accounts receivable that you have. More, more slides. This one is particular to the lease standard that we just implemented in the current year. There is some estimates involved in recording the asset of a lease as far as the incremental borrowing rate for the lease. That's an estimate of how that will play out in the future. As your auditors, we are required to maintain our independence throughout the audit, and I'm happy to say that we have done that. We, we evaluate the types of services that we may offer the city in conjunction of just the audit itself. The only additional service that we provide is to complete the appropriate sections of the data collection form, which is where the city reports to the federal clearing warehouse related to the federal dollars that are spent, how those, what programs that you had and expended during the year and how the audit results, what the audit results of that were. So we do that, and then we have to evaluate if we're still independent after performing that service. I'm happy to say that we are because you guys assign a person with skills, competence, and experience to oversee that service of basically filling out that form. All right, other required communications. We did not incur any difficulties with management during the audit. Everything that we asked for was provided. We did not have any disagreements with management during the audit. We did not consult any other outside auditing firms or accountants on any kind of matter. Management did sign a representation letter for us in order to issue the audit and us rely upon those representations. We're not aware that management consulted any other accounting firms or audit firms during the course of the audit. We did not have any other findings or issues to report to you as a part of our audit. No fraud or illegal acts were identified during our audit, and we do not have a going concern for the city. We do believe that you'll still be in business a year from now. Other matters. So within our financial statements, we, in our opinion, there are different things that we point to, and there are different levels of opining within those financial statements. So the first opinion that we give that's different than the normal opinion on the basic financial statements is, are in relation to opinion on the supplementary information. So basically, the supplementary information are all the schedules that you'll find within that report behind the footnotes. They, they are basically the individual fund statements and supporting budget to actual statements and those types of things. We basically say that we, we opine on them in relation to the fact that we, how they roll up into the financial statements that we actually opine on. The next section and a type of opinion is the required supplementary information. That is the management discussion and analysis that you'll find before the financial statements, and then the, the schedules that relate to the pension and OPEB that are just after the footnotes. Those we don't actually opine on, but we do review those to make sure that they are materially consistent with what the financial statements say. All right, so GASB standards coming up in the future. There are several. GASB's been busy. The ones that we are most concerned about coming up are the GASB 96. These are the subscription-based information technology agreements or arrangements. Those, that standard is going to do the same thing that the leases involved. If you're basically leasing software, you're going to be having to record an asset and liability associated with that. Just to put that in, in a very simplistic manner, that's basically what it's, what it's saying. And then the other one that, that we're really concerned about is the compensated absences. There's a lot of estimates that are going to be involved with coming up and reporting that standard down in the future. But of course, we're, we'll be working with management in the future to make sure those get addressed as necessary. And I'll be glad to take any questions.
Thank you so much for this information, colleagues. All right, I'll just start us out there. An article recently came out by Wallet Hub that Durham, North Carolina, of the 150 most populated cities in America. We are number 10 best-run city. So, and it's for reasons like this. So thank you to our management and our leadership for being just simply amazing. Thanks for your assessment. All right, I will pass this off.
I did want to make one final comment. Councilwoman Johnson and I, we sit on that committee, and I think Councilwoman Freeman is the audit. I cannot let this moment pass without, I really wanted to jump up and watch the balloons fly and the banners roll. When the auditors check the auditors and we come back with a great report, it's fascinating what they do. It's very detailed. Just sitting on that committee, I've learned so much, just all of the checks and balances. I cannot say enough about that department. You're a bad lady, Dr. Bruinton. I'mma tell you right now, you and your department, that is so wonderful, and I will continue to sit on that committee. It's, it's amazing, and I could not let that moment pass you by without expressing my gratitude for this being a great city, well-run, and, and now the outsiders have come in again with no opinion, no biasness, and said, they're clean. Congratulations to you and your team. Job well done.
Well, one bad lady deserves another. Item number 12, a 2022 third-quarter crime report. This audience will be presided over by her honor.
Come on, chief.
I would like to also say, Tim Flora and his department, the finance department, are really the ones that should be congratulated here for this...
Woo! We are the... Yes. Where, where are you? Are they here? Please stay in, please stay in. Yes, yes. Thank you. All right, chief. First of all, I'd like to express our condolences to the families that have been impacted by violence over the last couple of days as we approach this holiday season. We are mindful that we have folk who are grieving right here in this bull city, but we also give our hats off to our police department and all of the officers and staff who work day and night to keep us safe. So, chief, I'm turning it over to you.
Very well said. Madam Mayor, good afternoon. Mayor Protem Middleton, good afternoon. My counsel, good afternoon to all of you, deputy city manager, as well as honorable, my favorite, city attorney Rayburg, Don Town Attorney Russ, and city staff, as well as our city of Durham community. I will echo the words, mayor, that you, you just, you just said, it's always very hard to come before you to talk about, or even try to maybe celebrate a reduction in some crime rates when such a tragedy happened last night in our city. But we certainly will be wrapping our arms around that family and praying for our community. So we are here to hear about the third quarter presentation for our crime in the city of Durham, as well as Durham Police Department's efforts to curb that crime. So first, as we normally do, we want to talk a little bit about Part 1 violent crime. So as you know, that includes homicide, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault. Overall, we are slightly down 7% in our violent crime numbers. We noted some decreases in homicide as well as aggravated assault, but we also saw increases in rape and robbery, 7% for rape and a 28% increase in robbery. So we'll, we'll talk about those a little bit more. So homicide, we had, for the end of the third quarter, we had 32 reportable homicide offenses out of 29 cases. As you know, year-to-date, we now have 41 as of today. Those homicide numbers includes three cases of negligent homicide, as well as officer-involved shooting and a citizen-involved shooting. And to date, we currently have 15 open cases of all of those with 17 victims. And so we'll talk a little bit more about the actual clearance rate later on. So rapes, they were up 7%, and we often look at those numbers and compare them to how many have been reported, and we are seeing that, we are seeing more reports of rapes, and, and we want to see that, right? We don't want those to go unreported. But we are also seeing that we are clearing cases that are cold cases from our rapes that have happened in previous years, thanks to the, the great work done by our cold case as well as our unit that is dedicated to Saki, the Saki Grant. So it's really, it's making a difference and hopefully bringing some closure, so the, the work continues to be done. Out of those 97 forcible rape cases, 29 of those have occurred in prior years. So we're talking about from cases reported from last year all the way back to five or six years prior. But we still work those cases. Four of those 15 unfounded cases that we have were reported in prior years, and 75 actual cases have occurred this year, and those are still active cases. Those are still being investigated. So our robbery, up 28%. I wish we could have a time where it was consistently down across the board, but unfortunately, that's not where we are. So 28% of our robberies occurred in the third quarter, went up in the third quarter compared to this time in third quarter 2021. So breaking that down, we also saw increases in robbery from people, from persons, as well as our business or our commercial robberies. Robberies from persons were up 29%, and robberies from, commercial robberies were up 27%. Most of those commercial robberies, nearly half of those, were of convenience stores. And that's consistent with what we see from our commercial robberies. The percentage of robberies from persons involving Hispanic victims, so we always want to make sure that we are tracking those numbers, was 37% through the third quarter of 2022. And then most, one of the things we also want to look at is the firearms. How many times were firearms used in, in these robberies? And what we saw is that in 61% of the total robberies, firearms were used. So that's 280-some cases out of 465 cases. 14 of those actually did result in gunshot wounds. Aggravated assault, down 20%. So we, we like to see the reduction in numbers. The majority, or 20, well, actually 25% of our aggravated assault incidents were domestic-related. Let's take a look at our shooting incidents. So we also want to be able to track the total shooting incidents, comparing it to the number of persons that were actually shot during this time period, and then how many of those were fatal and then non-fatal. We see slight reductions in all categories. So overall shooting incidents, person shots, fatal and non-fatal incident. Multi-victim firearm incident continues to, to, to account for a good deal of, of the overall incidents with about 37%. So of all of those aggravated assaults through the third quarter were involving multi-victim firearms incidents. And this is not unlike what we have seen in years past, an increase in, in the number of people being shot in a single incident. So I do want to just take a moment and, and really applaud the work that, you know, staff has, has done, has continued to do to address our violent crime, to include our non-fatal shootings as well. So you know, in April, we did form the specialized unit CAT team to really take a focused look at the, the crime that's occurring, the violent crime that's occurring across, across our city, specifically shootings. And they have worked really closely with a number of our units internally, but also externally in the city of Durham, and we have their numbers later on. But I also want to talk about, or at least highlight, that we did make some small changes in our organizational structure within our organized crime division. We combined two of our units, which increased the staffing, which also increased the workload that we were able to handle in order to, to really focus a little bit more and work closer with our federal partners in order to identify key individuals that are committing crimes within the city of Durham, and making sure that we are focusing our efforts in order to be able to enhance federal prosecution, which would remove these individuals from our community. And so I do want to just, you know, take a moment and, and highlight Deputy Chief Montgomery. She's giving me the squinty-eyed look. For her work, her and her team really have taken a look at, at our violent crime rate and what organized crime division can do on, on the side of the, of the federal portion, as well as the criminal investigations division. So I applaud them for, for their work. Let's talk about property crime. So we can never forget about the ongoing property crime that we do have here in the city of Durham. So overall... So overall, you will note that we did see a 2% decrease from our Part One Property Crime Events, burglary, larceny, and motor vehicle theft. Decreases were noted in burglaries and larcenies. Motor vehicle theft is ticking up. And so we can attribute that to, you know, people still leaving keys in cars. It's getting cold. If you haven't noticed, it's been rather cold this week, so people are warming their cars up. And that really does increase the chances of the vehicle being stolen. So let's drill down a little bit deeper into the individual numbers. So burglaries themselves were down 16%. And 60% of those burglaries, though, were to residences. Commercial burglaries were also down 40%. So the robberies have gone up, but the actual burglaries are coming down quite significantly. The top three commercial locations that we saw these robberies, correction, were, the burglaries were the specialty shops. That was the highest number. Our restaurants, and then our convenience stores. So it's interesting that convenience stores were lower on the burglaries, but higher on the actual armed robberies. Our larcenies were down 2%. That's an interesting number, because sometimes we have, what drives our larcenies are shopliftings. But what we've also seen is that shopliftings, we had 1,500 incidents of actual shopliftings, which is about 2%, is we're up about 2% in the larceny category. But really what is driving this this time is 2,270 incidents of motor vehicle break-ins, in which cars, 52% or a little over half cars are being left unlocked. But also, as we start to track stolen firearms, we're seeing that there's a large number of firearms still being left in vehicles. And so we are going to continue to talk about that and really make sure that our gun owners are locking their guns up in a safe place, not in their cars. So that's really very important for us at this time. We did do, and we have seen, a noted increase in our construction site. The thefts from construction sites across the City of Durham. Want to applaud Public Affairs Unit for taking some unique approaches to actually go and talk to some of our construction site managers and pull together a PSA, very brief PSA, about construction site safety, locking up your building materials, and things like that. Motor vehicle theft, up 18%. We had 570 actual motor vehicle thefts. So you have the things that are reported, so those initial 911 calls that come in. And then, once you work through the case, you see what the actual number is. And so one is generally higher than the other. 240 of those have been recovered, so that's about 80%. So that's a good recovery rate for staff. And those are recovered in Durham. Outside of Durham, we are seeing cars being stolen from other areas and being brought into Durham and vice versa. And again, I don't, you know, want to continue to highlight it, but Hondas and Altima's are continuing to be the most commonly stolen. Clearance rates, this is one of the most key categories that interest us here at the PD and for you all. So as you all know, clearance rates are compared based upon department size, right, and population. So we fall in the category 250,000 to 499,999 population. The 2022 third-quarter clearance rates were higher than the 2021 clearances in homicide and burglary. So that's a key, really a key metric. And you know that we compare our clearance rates to the FBI. FBI is always generally about a year behind in reporting their clearance rates. They have a lot of cases to sort through in order to verify. So the clearance rates were higher in homicide, aggravated assaults, and all Part One Property Crimes compared to the 2020 FBI clearances. So I can tell you that team, staff, they're doing the work. They are doing the work. And they are clearing these cases and getting some really good cases being taken for prosecution into court and really doing a fantastic job. At the end of the third quarter, the clearance rate for homicide was 62%, 62.5%. As you see, this is well over the national average for clearance rates in 2020. That's 49%. Five of those cases, 2021 cases, were cleared in 2022. So we're still clearing cases from 2021. 15 of those cases from 2022 have been cleared. So we are constantly clearing the cases. And so the team is working really well together. They're working really well with other units. Our Forensic Services Division is doing some great work with the evidence that they are collecting at scenes. So want to just take a quick look here. Let me go back here. So just to note, of the total violent crime cases that were cleared through the third quarter of the calendar year, 85% of those were cleared by an arrest, either by our agency or another agency serving our warrant. So that's a significant number, because it means that there was enough probable cause to find a warrant in order to issue a warning, warrant for the rest. The remaining 15% were cleared by one or the other valid exception. So there was not sufficient evidence to be able to levy a warrant to support an arrest, but there was some sort of element that was not in law enforcement control in order to bring that person to justice. So here's some common exceptions. One of the most that we see is that the unwillingness of the victim to cooperate, or the prosecution of the case was declined for a number of reasons. Let's take a look at our Priority One Calls for Service. So obviously, we really strive to really be able to respond at our target or under our target of 5 minutes and 48 seconds. So there were 6,619 Priority One Calls for Service at the end of the third quarter of 2022. So that was a 9% increase from same time last year. So our call volume is, this is just indicative of our growing community, right? Our population is growing, so call volume is going to grow. Priority One Calls are going to grow. Our average response time was 6 minutes and 28 seconds, but that still did not meet what our target time, what we would like to see it at. We answered 49%, almost 50% of the Priority One Calls for Service in less than five minutes at the end of third quarter. So when we talk about Priority One Calls, we talk about those life, life-or-death calls that we are answering in less than five minutes. So this was something that we talked about, or at least I started showing last quarter, is, and definitely kudos to Jason Shees for developing this. It allows us to be able to see our average response time to Priority Calls for Service as a function of our staffing level. So we can actually see, at any given time, what was our staffing, and then what did our call response look like? All right? And so I'm a very visual person. I like to see what it looks like in order to be able to see what the actual story and where do we need to make adjustments. So the chart that you're looking at is the average response time from, and that's dispatch. So that's not when the call is received. That's the time the call is dispatched, until the first officer arrives on scene. During the last 30 months for emergency calls for service at our patrol staffing level and comparison to our patrol staffing level. This also includes additional personnel working. So you know, we've had some additional personnel working through supplemental patrol, through days that all staff have had to work patrol days. And also, as you know, through looking at this, so the orange line, that's our target, right? So it's straight across. That's our 548. That's where we want to respond to these calls. The black line, it's, that's trending downward, the black line is the actual trend. So as you know, or as you can see, as staffing goes up, our response time goes down. That's pretty predictable, right? Though there are also probably some other variables, so traffic congestion, road networks, and things like that. So if the staffing is in 50s or 60s, which raw numbers, we've had raw numbers, staffing been in the upper 30s, 40% staffing, and then our supplemental patrol boosts us up to 60%. Our response time is 6 minutes, 21 seconds. However, it does start to come down the higher that staffing goes. So that's what we like to see, and that's how we know what our desired target is at. All right. So want to take a look at our actual staffing. What does it look like? Where are we at? So our sworn staffing, as you can see, 79% at the end of September 2022. Our non-sworn staffing was at 87% at the end of 2022. Currently, we have nine recruits in Academy 56. We just graduated seven recruits from Academy 55. As you know, we have been focusing a lot of our efforts on recruiting and retention, recruiting and retention, and looking at new ways in which we can recruit and retain all at the same time. But there was also something that we really wanted to make sure that we were tracking and visualizing, that is predictive staffing. So what does it look like for us in five years? The things that we can anticipate. And so I will give a shout out to Deputy City Manager Ferguson for, you know, having this conversation with us and guiding us through this process. Deputy Chief Bishop, her team did a fantastic job with bringing forward, using Power BI, a pretty significant platform that allows us to plot out retirements or who we think is going to be retiring, looking at some historic numbers, but also, too, where have we been in 2021, 2022, and it leaves room for 2023. We are continuing to do the bonus pay for recruits, so the signing bonus, right? That's coming in with zero experience. You, there's a signing bonus, but it's spaced apart, so you don't get it all at one time. And then our lateral. So we have had folks coming back to Durham Police Department from other agencies, agencies that were paying higher. They have come back. We are bringing back folks that are coming from other agencies, but just that want to be a reserve officer that were here with DPD. We have sent an increase in our reserve officer program, so we are going to be utilizing them to help absorb some of our thin spots where we are with call volume and call-taking. So we continue to participate in the 30 by 30 campaign. As a matter of fact, our parade float is going to be dedicated to 30 by 30. We are going to highlight our HBCUs and our institutions, our colleges, our universities, our community colleges, by highlighting our officers that have graduated from those respective institutions, although we know that there's only one NCCU. We have reinstated our ambassador program. And so you'll start to see some of our officers that traditionally are not a part of our recruiting unit. However, because they have a common anchor to some of the folks that we're trying to recruit, we are utilizing them in that manner. So you'll start to see some new faces as our ambassadors. Public Affairs Unit is increasing the content type and the frequency of what we put on social media. A lot of highlighting of officers, why did you join the Durham Police Department? We want to connect and connect with those that maybe have never seen themselves as a police officer until they see a police officer that looks like them. And then improving our website experience is extremely important. So here's a little bit, this comes from this platform, and the next slide will show you what that actual screenshot of the platform that Deputy Chief Bishop and her team developed. So resignations, we always want to track our resignations. You can see that there's reduction in resignations from 2021 to 2022. Our retirements are increasing, and that's something that we are really, we are tracking our retirements. Terminations have increased. So this is the platform that I was telling you about. It's a pretty smart platform. You can select, this is calendar year 2022, and it takes into consideration the reasons why people leave, right? And it provides a snapshot. It also looks at, rolls in some of our academy numbers as well. If you'll note that retirement, so, you know, our retirement, because we are starting to go into the time where larger agencies, those of us that came through larger agencies when we had, you know, like Chief Bishop and I were in an academy that was 38. Those are the larger agencies now that we are looking forward to retirement. And so you're, those, we're going to start to see an increase of officers that are going to be retiring here in the next couple of years. And so those are the things that we're tracking. Those are things that we can foresee, but we also are concerned about the things that we are not able to see, such as some of the resignations. So we can filter this information out by year, reason for leaving, and by years of service. So what year of service are they leaving the Durham Police Department? So want to highlight our third-quarter applicant testing and looking at, you know, the demographics and who's testing, where are they kind of failing out in the process? So what you see is the second stage. The first stage is the application. The second stage is coming in to actually do your physical and your written test. So what recruiting, what they are currently doing is looking at the written test. So we do know that there are disparaging, that can be disparate testing out there, right? And we know that the testing that we've traditionally been using is old testing. And how are we testing? What's important? I mean, is it important that you know trigonometry or you're able, no, not as a police officer, sorry, it's not. But is it important that you're able to comprehend? Yes. But how are we administering those tests? Is it important that you're able to answer a question, a timed question, right? A very complicated question in 10 minutes? No. I want you just to be able to process and answer it correctly. So we're working with Durham Technical Community College, working through some of their guidelines, because we partner with them on basic law enforcement training. U-Visa requests by quarter. So we received 80 U-Visa requests through the third quarter of 2022. 63% of those of the U-Visa requests were approved. We have had, Captain Packard administers our U-Vises. We have had more of our law firms actually calling to engage a little bit more, to talk about that process. And Captain Packard has also been able to speak with them a little bit more about that, too. We do not have a backlog of U-Visa requests. That is our priority. Once we receive those in, we want to go ahead and process those accordingly. So finally, I want to take a moment to recognize Deputy Chief Joseph Kelly for his work in working with his team to develop the initiative that you see now, that we've had since April. Community referrals, this is your CAT Team. So community referrals, still continuing to make those referrals. Anything from noticing that a vehicle had, did not have any registration plates or anything like that, and tagging those cars for removal. And this one in particular is at Edgemont Elms. All the way through contacting Durham One Call about noticing a large amount of trash along the Fayetteville Street corridor. So it's the connection that how someone's environment certainly does, how someone's environment looks certainly can have an effect on potential crime, right? And making sure that we are a part of the solution as far as cleaning up communities. So just want to show you the number of firearms that have been seized, firearms-related charges... charges, quite frankly, is, is, is staggering. We have recovered five, and then there's been eight convicted felons, felons that have been found in possession of the firearm. And I don't like that number for the traffic stop, so I won't say it, but you can see it, so. And then finally, I would be remiss if I did not mention connecting with us on DPD's social media, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. We are hoping to be able to have TikTok at some point. So that concludes my presentation. I will take questions at this time. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Always a good job. I do want to spend a little time just having a conversation with you this afternoon on a couple of things. One, I received a, a letter the other day from a citizen who, I think he's a retired police officer, I want to say David Sokol, and he was asking about where we were standing in terms of trying to get a DNA lab, maybe. And I wanted to, to get your thoughts about that. I know a while back, getting things tested from the state could sometimes lead to, lead to long delays. And I have been removed from that process for a while, but I wanted to give you an opportunity to talk to us a little bit about that and see if there's, is there a need for us to try to partner so that we could try to do a, a sort of regional testing facility? Just your thoughts about that, if, and if you think we need to look at that.
Yeah, so I, you know, I've, I've said a couple, you know, a couple times that our, our forensic services unit, we do everything but DNA. Firearms, we can do it. We do all of that. That is my dream, for us to be able to process our, our own DNA. I know that that's easier said than done and takes a significant amount of funding. It also takes being able to bring staff in to be able to fill those positions. I don't feel, I, I certainly think that it, it's doable. I've been having some conversations with Deputy Chief Montgomery and her team about, you know, what do we need to start putting that into place? And so my short answer is, I'm very much supportive of it. Would love to see that for Durham, whether I'm gone or gone, and, but would love to see it. And, and certainly, we are working towards that.
Well, I would invite comment from our, from my fellow colleagues, but I would definitely think that now will be a good time to start to make, at least take steps to make that dream a reality. That is a, almost a necessary tool in this day and time now. And I don't know that we should delay that conversation, especially as we're approaching the budget season, and maybe it's time that we begin to take a real look at that, to see if we can make that a reality.
Thank you.
So, go ahead, Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I definitely would support something like that, and I would like to offer as a resource to figure out if there is a way to connect regionally the TJ COG, the TJ Council of Government, and just acknowledge, and I think that a regional partnership would be a great way to move forward in that.
So I, I do want that to, thank you, Councilwoman Freeman. I do want to say, let's talk about, or let's get an idea, and we'll talk with the county man, the city manager about it. You know, let's make some real steps. So that will be my, my charge to do that. And I'm looking around to see if anybody else up here would have any disagreements with us, at least looking at that as a, as a real opportunity for us to make some movement in that space. The other thing that I wanted to ask you about was, in the area of recruitment, let's, let's start there. You're, you're down about 116 sworn positions, down about 11 or so, as I kept 17, I think, of non sworn. I remember back in the day when you have an academy that will field Durham Tech, and now we're down to the reality of nine graduates, nine recruits, and seven graduates at our last graduation. Now, and I know that all, all, all law enforcement agencies are struggling in this arena, but the reality is that we just don't have the bodies or people who are interested in pursuing law enforcement as a career option in a lot of instances. So going forward, using your mind's eye, if this trend continues, if this trend continues that we've seen now over the last four or five years, where is it that you think we can press forward in working with our youngsters, so to speak, to begin to develop that re-energy towards law enforcement as a viable career option? How do, how do we best engage? And I know you're doing it at the college level, but is there an opportunity? Because, you know, to be real, when I used to go a, a lot to a lot of schools, you would have young people, they would say, well, what do you want to be when you grow up? When you had a career day, it's always like, I want to be a police officer, I want to be a fireman. Now you don't hear that. So we've kind of lost that. Is this an opportunity for us to kind of re-engage our community at a different level to begin to look at how, how are we going to recruit talent? Because that's where we're missing it. I know that you all are doing all that you can, but what do we do if this trend continues as we begin to get larger as a city?
I would say, I mean, we are at, I, what I, anytime I look at wrong numbers and I see before we even add supplemental what that staffing is, it's, it's, it's almost, it's almost death by a thousand cuts, right? So, you know, I see the staffing at what it is, and I know that as a city, and, you know, with support from our, our, our management, city management and leadership, that we are trying to get these incentives, and we are rolling these things into the process. But also, I see officers that are overworked. And so when we start to, to, to ask them, why, why are you leaving? So when officers leave, we're seeing many that are getting out of the profession altogether. But I think that we can create almost a, a pathway into law enforcement, right? I think that we need, and this is a conversation I've had with recruiting staff, is that really focusing on, you know, our area. But also, let's go to some of the, the smaller areas that, quite frankly, the ability to move up in an organization, the insurance benefits are nothing compared to what they are here, right? And highlighting those things. I've got, staff is looking at some really innovative, out-of-the-box thinking to draw folks into Durham and into the police department. But really, it's, it's, would, we don't want to relax our standards, right? But we don't want to be too bougie either, right? We don't want to be too, we're not, we, we no longer have 1,000 applicants for these positions, right? So somewhere, we have to look at what, what can we do to make it easier to get folks in? And so for us, it's, it's focusing recruiting efforts, really seeing what recruiting endeavors provide us more benefit, and how do we keep them in? So why are they, why are they leaving in the middle of training? You know, why do these officers leave? Is it, is PT too hard? I mean, what are we doing? So that's, it's, 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 there's a lot of, of, of things that are happening that we are looking at. And I just think it's going to take some serious out-of-the-box thinking, but also getting these kids when they're babies, when they're little, and I say little, middle school, and, and, and doing what we can to really bolster our PALS program. You know, do it, could that be an internship program, a paid internship? I think sky's the limit when we're talking about recruiting.
But Chief, that's another area that I would like to be able to interface and help to, to bolster what you all are already doing. So any opportunities that you see that we may be able to try to make something happen differently in that out-of-the-box mindset of yours, let's see what we can, we can do in that arena to help. My, my last kind of focus area would be on, we were on a call last week that Ms. Wallace led, I can't think of the name of the group, but it's when all of us kind of get together and talk about in detail what's going on in Durham, and we, we get down to some really, really specific demographic information. And I wanted you to sort of talk to us a little bit about the, specifically in the violent crime area. There is a specific demographic that I think that we need to highlight as we continue to see. If you could talk about that, but also not just the, we know it's going to be young black males, but the specific age group. And then if you know, what are the other demographic information that we can kind of tune in on? Are they in high school? Are they high school graduates? In particular, though, I'm interested in when your officers are out on the streets patrolling some of these areas, so we know kind of the geographic framework as well. How many of those young folk have actual homes? How many actually have an address that is in their name if they're over the age of 18? And then what is their working status? I don't know that we talk a lot about, when you talk about violent crime, we get lots of emails as a council about what are we doing about violent crime? And it starts to sound like very nebulous kinds of things. But these are actually people who live in our community and have circumstances that look very different for a lot of people. And we don't interact a lot. I call them at certain times the invisible folk, because I do believe that they are the largest homeless population that we have, but you don't really see them because they're hidden. So if you could, and those are just my assumptions based on my lived experiences, but if you could just talk about that a little bit, because the numbers are startling that I saw last week.
Yes, and, and, and I, I agree. No matter how many times I see those numbers, it's still just, you know, it, it is still startling. It, it's still, to see that, you know, between the ages of 16 and, you know, 24, if you are a young black male, and, and we're just talking about here in Durham, you are either going to be a victim or a suspect. You're either going to perpetrate, or you're going to be the victim of a crime, a violent crime. And, you know, those are ages where you should be enjoying life the most. And, and what we are seeing is that it is, it is steadily increasing the rate. The rate is going up. And then it goes down as, you know, they get older, as the age goes up. So, you know, when, when, when our officers are, are engaging, and, and I can only speak to a couple of instances that I have either witnessed or I know of for certain, while a home address is listed, it's not a stable home. It's a where I stayed last night, or it's a, it's not a stable home as, as I may know a stable home, or we, some of us, we know what a stable home is. It's not that. And, and, and so, yes, so I think that that is a large part of just not having the stable housing. And then we have to ask, what causes that, right? What is the root cause of that? And, and why, and the jobs, there's no, there's not a, there's, there's not a job that's put down. There's not a work, this is their work. They're out here trying to survive. And how can I go work somewhere when I don't even know where I'm going to lay my head? So it's survival. And those are some of the stories that I've actually heard. And then, you know, we ask, so what, what can we do? Well, that's a lot, that's a, it's almost asking someone that has lost someone in a tragic, you know, what can I do? Well, I don't even know. I don't even know where to begin or where to start. No. So that's, that's what we're seeing. We don't specifically capture that, but I think that would be an interesting statistic to see if we could capture that. And I'll, I can talk to Mr. Shee, so I can talk to Jason and find out how we can do that. We can put our heads together, I'm sure. But that, from my experience, that's what. Yeah.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want that, that land for folk. When we had that death last night, we had a 16-year-old killed, and I know his mother and his stepfather. Land that. That is not going to be solved by a police officer. It's not going to be solved by several members of council either. But it is a solvable problem. And I want folk to realize that Thanksgiving, for a lot of folk, is just another day to And the thing about it is, we can do something about it in this town. We really can, but it is a community effort, and folk have to see what they don't want to see. If you don't see a young person during Thanksgiving holiday, and where you go out of Black Friday, that looks like that they are involved in inner-city life, then you don't see them at all. Because you're not going to the places where they are. So they need housing. They need housing. A lot of people need housing. I open it up to my colleagues, because that makes me really sad.
Thank you so much for your report, as always, very detailed, and thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. And thank you, Mayor, for highlighting, I think, areas that sometimes people don't want to dig, you know, talk about. And so it brings to me something that I teach, is Maslow's hierarchy of needs. So if you don't have basic needs, food, shelter, things like that, you can't get to that level, higher level of functioning. And it also resonates in my heart that sometimes a lot of our youth have failed, been failed by sometimes the educational system. So they're falling behind. They don't know what their strengths are, because sometimes I, you know, I do some private work, and I'll ask, well, what are your strengths? And they can't identify what their strengths are. And actually, to be quite honest, sometimes some of the strengths that they, some of the things that they're using to be out in that community, doing some of the things that we don't want them to do, are strengths, right? Because if you can get out there and you can know how to, to know how to navigate a corner, right? Know how to set up a business illegally, there's some strengths there, but you're using it in a negative way, right? And so that also relates to the fact that, again, I'm very passionate, and I know I have some of my colleagues on this council, about mentorship. And not just programs that we just throwing together. You know, programs that are mentoring these children, wrapping services around them, finding out what their strengths are, leading them to those strengths, right? And also wrapping services around that family. Because if they don't have a place to live, if they have no one that they can go to in the home, or if they have nobody in the community that they can identify with, they're going to get into some things that we don't want them to get into. And I get really upset about, we keep talking about it, and talking about it, and talking about it, but what are we going to do about it, as the mayor said? Because more of our people are, they're dying left and right. And so when I'm told there's over 1,000 programs, youth programs in Durham, that's cute. But are those programs being evaluated? Are those programs really identifying and addressing the needs that we need? Because it's enough educated people in Durham, it's not even about the education. It's enough people in Durham that have a passion about what we're talking about, but I think we do a lot of blip service. And I'm at a point that I want us to have more solution-focused situations, because And I'm at a point that I want us to have more solution-focused situations, because our kids are dying left and right. I had another question for you, that I really want to say that I really love the fact that you are deeping, diving into the exam piece. Because that's a, that, sometimes, I, I know as a professor, some people do not, they don't know how to take exams. They're scared of exams, right? So I try to do a lot of experimental and more role-play and kind of project learning stuff, because I have even kids at college level that will cram up in an exam. And sometimes I always say, if I had my own university, I wouldn't give exams. I would give more experimental learning exercises, where you really are putting the practice into behavior, right? So I want to commend you on looking at that, because a lot of people don't do that. They just give exams, exams, and exams, and that's lovely, but even from an accreditation standpoint, you can't really measure questions sometimes on exams, right? You just can't, in terms of accreditation standpoint. But I, I, I want to add to, I think you're already looking at it, but some situational questions. So there's a push in terms of evaluation and situational questions, more role-play, right? I would love to see some questions on an exam that really give some real-life role-play situations that they're going to deal with in the community, right? And even questions around, you know, what is your take on cultural competence, right? Because you're going to weed out, you know, that's a question, like, oh, you know, can they really answer that? What is their idea on cultural humility? You can even do role-play situations around those questions to really deep-deep dive into how people are going to kind of act in certain situations. That would be more helpful to us than how much is 1 plus 1 and 2 and 2, and Jane went here? That, that's not giving us anything, because that's not going to help us know if this person can be able to identify in the community, especially the community in Durham. So if we can look into, and I know you're working on it, but more situational questions, some role-play, some real-life role-play example questions, even when they're at a point where they may have to role-play in front of the people that they're taking the test. Because I know for a fact, those, some of those exams doesn't really help you to find out if you're going to be an effective person as a police officer. And that's when we get some people that really don't need to be police officers, because they don't pass that 1.2 and 2, now to do fractions, but they can't tell me about cultural humility. They can't tell me about cultural competence. So, you know, I, I'd like to also, you know, maybe kind of work a little bit closely with you with some of that. Now there's an echo. Is that you? Yeah. So I just want to commend you on looking at that, because a lot of times people just don't look at the demographics of how they're doing exams, because again, that, that kind of eliminates some of the people, because some of our people don't, just people in general don't like exams. But I think we have to do more of really creating exams that's really going to give us more to how these, these people are going to work in the field. Am I making sense?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, which way? Councilman Williams, and then we'll turn to my right.
Thank you, Madam Chief, as always, for being such a heck of a leader. Just looking at some of the trends that are, that are, you know, I see the efficiency happening as you're dealing with this tough reality. The mayor actually asked some of the questions that I was going to ask. I guess I'll continue on briefly about the retirement versus recruitment. I, I'm looking at the, and I dare not assume, but I, I'm looking at the demographics who are failing the written test, and it's consistent with some of the academic performance in our schools. Are we experiencing any type of language barriers with the comprehension of the actual test? Is it like, are we accommodating any? Well, I guess, I don't know if we can accommodate on a police assessment, but do you believe that there is any type of language barriers that may be happening with the folks that are actually failing the written test?
So I, I will just answer that from a personal standpoint. So, you know, staff sends out a, kind of a mock assessment to anyone that applies when they submit their application to prepare them, right? So they send this, that you can take this, this, what the test would potentially look like, they send this out to the, the candidates. I had a copy of that, and I actually started to take it, and then I closed my, my laptop up, because I had to go back and read it three and four times. And I think I'm smart, right? But it was, there was so much to that, right? I think that there's just a lot to the questions that does make it, and I have, I'm in my calling, right? These are folks that want to be in this calling. And so they're under pressure to complete it in a certain time, and you're having to go back and read it three and four times. I just think it's not, it's not easy to comprehend. Is there a, an issue with reading comprehension? I, I don't think that exam measures that. I just think that there's too many things happening, and then you want someone to be able to understand and then correctly answer this question with all these moving parts, using, you know, and, and, and the test is supposed to be at a 10th grade level. Well, I, I just, we, we just are trying to find something a little bit different, right? Because I know the problems that I had, even just trying one, and I put it up.
Yeah. And the test is designed by, at what level, do we do that, is that a statewide thing, or?
So, so yes, and Deputy Chief Bishop can correct me if I'm wrong. In order to enter into a basic law enforcement training program, there has to be the, the written test, there has to be a physical fitness portion to actually assess where you at physically, right? But also too, for, for the city, the written is, is also required, there has to be a test. So we're working with human resources as well, and then trying to work with what the state requires for entrance, to come up with, with something that will work for us.
Right. No, I, I get the process, I mean, the actual assessment. Who designs the assessment?
It's a third-party vendor. There's several out there. There's several assessment centers, that it's, it's a, it's a electronic.
Gotcha.
Electronic, or in our case, it's a scan, scan reader.
In your opinion, would you say that the test is, I think I sort of know your response on this, but would you say it's reflective or responsive to, or culturally responsive to the practice of what they do on a daily basis?
No, I think, I would say, what it's trying to measure is comprehension, but it's hard to measure comprehension when you're under, like, when you have to answer it within a certain time, right? I mean, we can have a conversation, I understand what you're saying, and you understand what I'm saying, so we're, I'm comprehending it, and I, can I translate it to paper? Absolutely. But you throw a lot of, it's just, it's, it's not, I don't think it's an accurate measurement of really what we're looking for.
Sounds like our school assessments, same outcome. Could you just quickly run down our, what type of incentives do we offer again for recruitment?
So we have a $10,000 signing bonus that's payable, and that's both for recruits coming in, so zero experience, and then laterals, so folks that have experience coming from other agencies. And that's payable in two portions. And then we have relocation bonus. We also have, you know, our Take Home Car program that extends to the county limits, so Durham County. The, and we have, you know, the, the benefits package that we have, educational incentives. So for our lateral program, we have incentives there, plus, plus incentives once you actually join and come in. So, you know, we like to, we like to be able to provide them, which is very hard on this newer generation, but we like to be able to provide them what their picture could possibly look like in two years, right? And, and what their opportunities could be in two years. You know, if you're planning to start a family, the city benefits package is tremendous, right? Or if you want to further your education, this is what that looks like, and this is what the city does.
Thank you. I, I sort of asked that, so it could be recorded on YouTube, so folks can go back and listen, and hear what they can get if they want to come to Durham. Last two items here are, they sort of work together, I guess, but the Durham Crisis Response Center.
Yes, DRCRC.
Yeah, so are we, or do we collaborate with them from the department?
We do, we do. We, they're, we make contact with them on a number of levels, whether it's during the actual case, or even after making referrals. We do, we do that work in making sure that we can at least provide information to connect to resources after. And then referrals to CIT, and, and, and so we're kind of putting that together and bringing it full circle, and our victim advocates as well.
Thank you. And lastly, a bit personal, as much as I advocate for and on behalf of young black men, considering what we're going through in the streets, do we have any type of rehabilitation programming? And I'm only asking because I, I just personally experienced the situation, and the hardest thing to do is have to charge someone, when you, you know that sitting in a jail cell is not going to fix the issue that carried them there. So do you want to be able to help maybe turn their life around, or get them to think differently? Do we have any type of rehabilitation programming?
So for us, we are, we, we really do rely heavily on our diversion referrals, our misdemeanor diversion referrals, and even making contact, even if someone is arrested for a felony. If an officer feels like this person could benefit from some sort of referral, whether or not they, diversion, misdemeanor diversion obviously does not extend to a felony, however, if we think that that person could benefit from some, you know, intervention, referrals have been made.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. I turn to my right now. I think Councilwoman Freeman, and I believe Mayor Prokam, you're on, so, in that order. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I thank you as well for the report and the presentation, and I want to fully associate myself with my colleagues' comments, just acknowledging how hard this is, and what, you know, we can do to support recruitment. I, I just wanted to turn our attention to the actual report, just acknowledging, this information is made publicly available, and I think it's really helpful for folks in our community to actually see it. And so it is available on the website in the attachments. I, I do want to point out, in just one situation specific to child sex offense, to a child sex offense arrest, that a John Emory Compton, age 35, was arrested on a sexual assault charge in 2017. And I do want to just note that if there are other juvenile females during this timeframe that might have been assaulted, that they come forward. I think this type of information has, there has to be a way to pull this out, because I do think that it should be highlighted in a way that, that helps, because these are the types of cases that will get dropped, because there is a juvenile involved, and that's a, that's a pretty long time for this to go on. And so I do want to say that that information is, is highlighted and available in our report. And I also want to add that I appreciate the many, many officers, including Officer R.M. Benfield in Squad 18, and a specific officer, I just had to say, Officer T.J. Friend in Squad 2C. Just, just the recovery of roughly 500 stolen motor vehicles, and also doing that while training a recruit is amazing. I want to also note the, I, I saw it throughout the report, I mean, throughout the presentation, but in the report as well, the unlocked vehicles, and, you know, just noting how, 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 how much you could help if you understand what's happening. And so I'm going to stress again to our public that it's helpful if you're reading these reports and seeing what our officers are up against. I did have to say that for Officer A. Rivera in Squad 3D in September, just being able to communicate with those folks at El Rey, and to calm folks down and speak to the victim's family in their language is really helpful as well. And so I, I do want to highlight that, that layer. And I, I just, I just want to keep saying, like, we have to find ways to pull this information out, so that people can see this is what the Durham Police Department is doing, and this is what the life of what we're, like, how we all are in community together, and how this helps. So I, I do want to say that this report has been very useful over the years, and I want to reiterate as much as possible, I know a former colleague would say it every time, and it feels like it's on me to say it, is that this report is very useful, and there's a lot of information, and I would encourage our public to read it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, good afternoon. Always good to see you, and to the command staff that's present with us, and to all the men and women under your command, thank you so much for what you continue to do. I'd be remiss not to notice you have another employee with you who can't seem to quit us.
Yeah.
Either she's covering us, or now working with us. We want to welcome, welcome Crystal Price to the City of Durham. Welcome to the City of Durham. No questions from you today. Welcome aboard. Chief, I, I want to firstly, just, just congratulate you on the job you've been doing, the consistent, relentless job you've been doing. I, I want to highlight firstly, it is so exciting to hear that there's no backlog in U visas anymore, and just even with our staffing shortages and challenges, we know that our, our brown population oftentimes is targeted precisely because people know of their fear to interact with, with the, the justice system or the, the police. So the fact that we are, have managed to make that a priority with all that's going on, I think is heartening, and should be something that, that's celebrated. With respect to staffing, I just left a huge meeting, several of us just left a huge meeting with our colleagues from around the country in Kansas City, the National League of Cities, and of course, a recurring theme amongst our colleagues was staffing. And while it is, it, it remains a challenge, it, it does need to be said that, that we are slowly inexorably moving in the right direction, and I thank the council for things like increasing the salary, and increasing language incentive bonus, the Take Home Car Program. But at the end of the day, it really is the leadership, I think, that you've been providing, and your staff have been providing, and just really pounding the pavement to get people to come to us, and we are. The public needs to know, we got a long way to go, but we're moving in the right direction. I think two elements that need to be present is, one, Durham needs to know that you're not afraid to terminate rogue officers, you're not afraid to snatch badges from criminals who got through the, fell through the cracks on the one hand, but on the other hand, I think it's important for our officers to know that they have a government who will support the ones that do it right as well. And, and those two things have got to converge, that they have a, a, a leadership that they don't feel is hostile towards them, but who also won't take any nonsense either, will defend the values of, of the city. And I think that balance is, is being struck, and I think all of those things collectively are why we are seeing movement, albeit slow, but movement in the right direction. Couple of specific questions. We've seen an uptick in, in hate crimes, targeting the Jewish community, LGBTQ community, and oftentimes when, I know we get these national alerts when a critical incident occurs somewhere in the country. And one of the things I've been most proud of is, is when residents will call us and say, hey, something happened in so-and-so, what are we doing here? And I'll call you guys, and you're like, you're already on it. And even with our staffing issues, say a little bit about our directed patrol posture, when, when incidents happen, that you don't need to wait for electors to call you. Do we have protocols in place where we will automatically increase vigilance, say around mosque, or synagogues, or places where members of the LGBTQIA+ community hang out? Would you say a little bit about our response when we get notifications of incidents that have national implications?
Yes, absolutely. So I, you know, I, one of the things that I'm most fortunate for is having a great team that knows the work, and knows what they need to do. And so during some of these recent incidents that we've had, the team has already, so speaking, my deputy chiefs, they have already started to make phone calls when they hear that these incidents have happened, to make sure that their folks are focusing attention in certain areas, making sure that we have visible patrol or directed patrols, right? Making sure that if, if we need to maintain a consistent rotation of officers, that we do that as well. That's before I even call them and say, hey, I know you're already working on it, we already have it, chief, we already have it. So it's always foremost on our minds when, and yours too, you all too, it's when it comes across your, your telephone screen, you know, that this has happened, same with, with team, and they start setting the wheels in motion until, or if we need something more permanent in place.
That's wonderful. And I, I think that's a really important message for the public to understand that, that it's already part of our culture, that still, I'm not saying don't call us, but it should be known that in Durham, that it's part of our culture, that we are, our vigilance goes in automatically, you don't need an elected person to call them to make them change their behavior, that it's all part, already part of our culture to increase our vigilance to those communities when things happen. So thank you for that. Last question, you know, forfeiture laws, forfeiture laws are kind of a sticky set. Last question, you know, forfeiture laws, forfeiture laws are kind of a sticky subject in our community. And I noticed in a report, one of the slides, that we see some money, one was like $300 and I think one was $1,900. Would you tell us under what circumstances money is seized and why that happens and what happens with the money?
So anytime money is found in the presence of narcotics, that unless it's disproved in court, then it's assumed that that money is basically a result of criminal activity and criminal enterprise. Certainly, when the case goes to court, the person that has been charged has the opportunity to go before the court and ask for that money back, depending upon the amount. Now, if we see large amounts, right, then there's more paperwork that has to be done. That person has to prove that those gains were not as a result of criminal enterprise. And so that sometimes can be a lengthy process, but that money is held until the court says, you know, that it's to be returned to that person or those individuals or that money has been forfeited.
Chief, that's all I have. Thank you so much. Happy Thanksgiving to you and please convey our gratitude to the men and women under your command. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Councilwoman, Colby Garrow.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chief. Good afternoon, ma'am. I just wanted to say thank you for a great report and for all the good questions from my colleagues and just seeing a lot of the improvements, especially the homicide clearance rate. I know you all are working tremendously hard and I know that staffing hasn't been great, so it's extremely challenging. I also have deep appreciation for the U visa stats. That was something that was hard fought and so to see that continue is just honestly, it makes me quite happy. I know they're victims of crime, but it is a lifesaving tool for many, many immigrants in this country. Thank you. I hope you have a wonderful Thanksgiving. I hope your staff also does.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Turning it to Councilwoman Hoseley-Hymon, then followed by Councilwoman Johnson.
I just have two last questions. Do law enforcement, do they get an incentive if they have a degree?
Yes.
You know, like, so is there like an extra additional pay?
So there's a percentage and so we're actually working on that now, so.
So there is a percentage, okay. And then is, and I know that my counsel had, before me becoming on counsel, that there was an increase in their salary, but I'm asking, is there like a, I guess, location also on top of that? Because I remember like really back in the day in New York City, we could not get police officers at all. And then they gave like another incentive for you to come and be a police officer in New York City. I don't know if that's, you know, that monetarily we can do that, but I was just wondering because some people, when I, because I'm very much out there trying to recruit, you know, and as you know. And they were like, oh, Durham has got so many crimes. Well, all cities have crimes, but sometimes we get a bad rap, right? So I was just wondering if, is there something else given because you are coming to work in Durham?
Yes, so our relocation incentive right now is what is being provided to relocate to the city limits of Durham. Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for your report. Good to see you again. I just had a couple of questions about the slide where you discussed the crime area target team. Could you give us a little bit more background on that team and specifically, I was particularly interested in these traffic stops and if you could give a little bit more background on how those, how y'all are operating in terms of traffic stops?
Yes, thank you. So the crime area target team, so as you know, we had to do something following the Matheson Street, the very unfortunate incident that happened, homicide that happened at Matheson Street. And so that was, the crime area target team was reborn from that. And essentially, we actually handpicked officers that we knew would not only be responsive to the needs of our community, but also would be able to focus on crime trends that were occurring, whether it be a shooting that happened the night before or a trend that was occurring from information received from organized crime division. And what they were tasked with doing was going out and making sure that they are conducting directed patrols in those areas that had already been identified as being a location where we were having repeat problems of violent crime from a specific area. And so that's what they did. But also at the same time, something that we had never done was also, you know, they had to actually identify quality of life issues and making sure that those were reported and followed through, as well as community contacts that were non-law enforcement-related community contacts. So their focus is really helping supplement what's happening on uniform patrol, but also being there to supplement the work that's being done out of the organized crime division as well.
Thank you. So these folks are deployed to these areas where we've been having issues with violent crime, then what do they do? Like what's their daily, what are their daily activities like?
So their daily activities, they are required to get out of their cars, they are required to talk to our neighbors, they are also required to affect traffic stops, knowing that statistics and data shows us that these guns are getting from place to place, which has been verified by NIBIN and some of the hits that we're getting, same gun, different parts of the cities, used in multiple crimes. It is their role to be proactive in enforcement in the areas where we're seeing the most violent activity.
So when you say get out and talk to people, are they talking to just anybody that they see walking around the street? Are they looking for specific individuals? Both?
No, they're separate. Those are separate things, right? So when they're looking for a specific individual, they have that information on that person. When they are asked to get out and talk to people, it is a, how are you today? How are things going? You know, what's happening in the, is there anything happening in the community that we need to know about? Just having those conversations in a completely non-law enforcement, I mean, they're law enforcement officers, but it shouldn't be on the tail end of an enforcement action. So it's completely separate from that.
Okay. How are these folks being trained? I'm wondering, you know, having a conversation like the one that you just described, hey, how are you doing today, is different from, hey, where are you going? What are you doing here? You know, like it seems like there are, there are ways to do this in more or less potentially harmful formats and I'm wondering how your, how your department is handling that question.
So we have been very diligent to monitor their activities, making sure that what they are doing and the actions that they are taking are not based upon bias, but are based upon what they have been trained to do. So using a lot of de-escalation, going out and fostering those relationships, right? And that's what they've been trained to do, what all of our officers are being trained to do, is recognizing that the problem is the place, not the people, right? And so that's another reason why those officers were hand-selected for their work that they were already doing in the community.
So if someone, if one of these officers were to walk up to someone and they didn't want to talk to them and they walked away, or they insulted them and then left, what are the officers trained to do in response?
It's not illegal. I mean, it's not illegal to insult an officer and it's not illegal to walk away from an officer. If that, if the engagement or the officer was trying to engage with this person and they didn't feel like talking to the person, then simply they continue to walk. And certainly if there is a call that has, they've been dispatched to a call and they are conducting an investigation and this person fits into the investigation. So if there's a disturbance and there's someone walking around that is yelling and shouting and what have you, and that person is identified as who the caller called in and said this person is doing it, then yes, they are going to engage with that person.
And in that case, there would be a different, they would be detained rather than just approached on the street? Like is that, that difference being made clear?
Well, so most likely what will happen is that they will, they will wait for our co-responders, if that's within, they will wait for Ryan's team, Director Smith's team, and they will engage as a team. And they will kind of go at that issue in that manner versus traditionally how we have in prior instances. They will engage that way.
Thank you. That's all super helpful. Can you talk a little bit more about the traffic stops? What are, why are people being stopped? Like what justifications are folks using to stop people?
So if there's regulatory, if there's vehicle regulatory issues, if there, if that individual has been observed driving in a manner that is non-safe. So for example, we've been trying to stop some of the dirt bikes, right? If they're driving in such a way that they're making it unsafe for the general public, they're going to be stopped. And so that's what that team is doing. If people are operating that vehicle in that way, they're going to be, they're going to be stopped and issued either a ticket or, I was going to say written reprimand, but a warning about their behavior.
Do you have, or could you provide us with a breakdown of the number of stops that are being conducted based on driver behavior as opposed to regulatory or other things that might not be related to an actual threat?
Sure, absolutely. So we have that information in the traffic stop report that we put together every six months. So that information exists, but if you're wanting something specifically for the crime area target team, I could have Mr. Shees prepare that.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. Yeah, I am wondering specifically around the crime area target teams because these are places in which we are intentionally increasing policing and I'm trying to get a hold on the, you know, potential externalities that can result from that. There are obviously good intentions behind it, but yeah, I just want to make sure we're mitigating any potential downsides as much as possible.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it and have a great holiday.
You too.
Everybody? Well, Chief, I wanted to add my thanks for a great report, great job, well done to you and your staff. We wish that you all have a very happy Thanksgiving, safe holiday. To all our first responders, and thank you for your job. Well done.
Thank you and thankful for all of you and your support and your patience with us over the years and we appreciate you, so thank you. Happy holidays. Thanksgiving.
Thank you so much. I now turn it.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, colleagues. We now turn to item 24 on the Budget and Management Services Department, FY 2223, First Quarter Financial Report. This is a presentation and at this time I'll yield to my honorable colleague, Councilmember Freeman, who will run this part of the meeting.
Thank you. And as we're bringing up item 24 for FY 202223, First Quarter Financial Report, I understand this is a presentation and I'll turn it over to Ms. Christina Rhoden.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Members of Council. My name is Christina Riordan and I'm with the Budget and Management Services Division, or Department, excuse me. I'm here today to present the first quarter financial report and this, of course, is a report that we do with our friends in finance. So just to kind of do a brief overview, we present to you four times a year our quarterly report to kind of give you an idea of how the city is doing and their financial health. The first quarter is the first three months of the year and so it's really a time of the year where we still have a lot of uncertainty. So I kind of want to preface all of our predictions that we're making with that information. The next time will be in front of you will be in February to provide you with our second quarter financial report. I'm going to start out today talking about the general fund, which is where most of our departments sit. The thing, the thing I want to point out about our general fund, I'm going to start out talking about the revenue side. The general fund is made up of two main revenue sources, property tax, which we, which property tax bills are not due until January 5th, so a lot of that revenue does not come in until December and January. And also sales tax, which is on a three-month delay. Property tax makes up about 51% of the general fund revenue and sales tax makes up about another 35%. So both of those revenue sources, we have very little information from on the first quarter. What I can say about sales tax is that now that we are in November, we have had two payments at this point for our July and August. Both of those payments combined have come in at about $14 million, which is about 11% higher than where we were last year. So that is good news, but we, of course, are cautiously optimistic since that revenue source is unpredictable. I'm going to talk a little bit in general about the revenue sources in the general fund and compare them to the same time last year. So the first one is property tax, which we, is up about 14% over last year's Q1. Occupancy tax, which of course was most affected by COVID, is I think starting to see a rebound and we are seeing it's at 55.9% higher than it was last year at this time. The Powell bill is state funding, which is something we don't have a lot of control over, but it's up about 19%. Intergovernmental revenues are down about 17.8% from where we were last year, but I do want to remind everyone that most of our intergovernmental revenues are revenues that we receive from Durham County. So this is most likely a timing issue rather than any sort of area of concern. And then charges for services are up about 19.5%. This kind of gives you a visual representation of those major revenue sources. And as you can see, property tax, we are up about $2.1 million from where we were last fiscal year. And then, of course, charges for services is up about $564,000, occupancy tax 600 and 264,000, and the Powell bill about 601,000. The next slide will show you our revenue source and kind of showing you where the adjusted budget is, the activity through the end of September, and then our projection for where we think will end the year. We're anticipating that we'll end the year with all revenue sources on budget except for two, which is the Powell bill, which again, as I've stated before, is some state funding we receive. Based on our, we receive that in two payments and based on our first payment, we anticipate that we will be above budget by $1.3 million. And then charges for services, which are doing well, we believe that will be above budget by $200,000. Moving on to expenditures, there is good news in that we think that there will be savings from departments. We anticipate that in the general fund, expenditures will be under budget by $3.5 million, with personnel costs being under budget by $4 million, and then operating costs over budget by And that is mostly due to an increase in fuel costs that we've seen. We do have, our vacancy rate, I think, is driving those personnel savings and a lot of the departments where we have some overages due to fuel are some of our departments that unfortunately do have some of our higher vacancy rates. So we don't anticipate that any budget, any departments will exceed budget by the end of the year. The next slide is giving a visual of those comparison, a comparison of FY 23 to FY 22. And as you can see, spending in personnel is about $1.4 million lower than we were last time at this year, with operating expenditures being about 1.5 over where we were last time this year. You'll notice there is a large difference in the transfer to other funds. This $10 million is a transfer that we make out of our general fund to our CIP to pay for street paving every year. And so this is really just a timing issue. This probably happened later in the fiscal year last year than it did this fiscal year. Again, here's another view of the expenditures in the general fund and as I've talked about, we're anticipating that we will see a $3.4 million under budget in expenditures. Moving on to enterprise funds, I'm going to start out talking about the water sewer fund. Revenues in that fund are about 29.56% of budget. Revenues in that fund are about 29.56% of budget. And the overall expenses are at 51.7% of budget. But I will kind of mention that the Water Sewer Fund does have some debt service and some transfers to our CIP. So that is why that is kind of, it looks, the expenses look higher in the first quarter. But it's, again, it's a timing. If we look at operating expenses and personnel expenses, you'll see that they're both at about 25% of budget, which is on target for where they were about this time last year. Revenues are currently projected to be at budget by the end of the year. Personnel expenditures are projected to come in under budget due to some personnel vacancies they have within the water department. And then operating expenditures are expected to come in over budget due to some chemical cost increases that they're seeing in that fund. The first slide shows you their, the revenues. And as you can see from the Water and Sewer Fund, this is not a fund that receives tax revenue. And so its largest source of income is its operating revenue, which they are projecting will come in at budget. Looking at expenditures, Personnel Services is expected to come in under budget by one point, approximately $1.2 million. Operating expenditures is that over by $3 million, which are those chemical costs. And then you will notice in some of the funds, there is a payment related to some debt refunding that finance has done. That will be corrected as part of a budget amendment later on in the year or so. The next fund I want to talk about is our Transit Fund. Overall, it's expected to operate under budget and expected to come in under the adjusted budget by about $417,000. This fund has been receiving federal grant funding, which has kind of had a positive impact on revenues in the fund. It does have some planned service enhancements within the fund. And so there is, you know, if those do not happen, that could, that could, the expenses and revenues associated with those service enhancements could, could be lower, could lower the budget or where they come in at at the end of the year. Their state funding is anticipated to be $3.4 million in FY 23. And this is a fund that receives tax revenue. It gets 3.75 cents of the tax rate and that equates to about $14.9 million. Looking at the revenues, they are expecting all revenues to come in at budget. Operating revenues, just a reminder that the fund is operating fair free. And so that is reflected in those operating revenues you see. And then, of course, the largest revenue sources are taxes and grant funding, which is both federal and state grants. Looking at expenses, they are expected to see some small expenses in Personnel Services and also operating expenditures. The Solid Waste Fund is the next fund. They are expecting to see, to go, to see some slight, be slightly over budget in their operating revenues. And this is due to some of the mixed solid waste fees that they get at their transfer station. During the pandemic, you may remember that commercial garbage was, we had some decline in commercial garbage. And so those fees are starting to recover in this fund, which is good news. Personnel expenditures are expected to come in at budget and there is a very small savings in operating expenditures at $686. The Solid Waste Fund receives about 30% of its revenue from charges and non-tax revenue. And then the remaining is the tax rate that we provide to the fund, which is 5.59 cents, which is about $22 million. So looking at the revenues, as I talked about before, they're expecting to come in above budget in revenues to the tune of about $153,000. Sorry, 153, yeah, $153,000. And then the, on the expense side, there is a slight savings of $686. The next fund we'll talk about is the Stormwater Fund, which provides for the maintenance of stormwater activities, including street cleaning. The fund is self-sufficient and receives no tax support. And at quarter one, there's good news. The fund has received about 39.8% of its projected revenues, which is slightly higher than it was this time last year. And just as a reminder, this fund is anticipating using a large portion of its fund balance this year, but that's due to some capital improvement projects that are going on within the fund. As you can see from the operating revenues, they're expected to come in above budget by $58,000. And then on the expense side, there is a slight savings in expenses and a slight overage in capital outlay. The Parking Fund is, was one of the funds that was most impacted during COVID. This fund is still, the operating revenues are still not covering operating expenditures. And I do, as a reminder, the Debt Service Fund does subsidize a portion of the debt in this fund. There is some good news in the fund. Last, this, this year, council approved some fee increases for hourly and monthly parking and that has been having a positive impact on the fund. Operating expenditures are expected to come in slightly under budget with personnel expenditures expected to come in at budget. So looking at the revenues for the Parking Fund, just a reminder, this time last year in Q1, the Parking Fund had $585,000 of operating revenues and now it's seeing about $1.3 million. So there has been an increase in operating revenues in that fund. But we're still not expecting that fund to meet budget by the end of the fiscal year. And then that miscellaneous revenue has to do with some tenant leases as well too, related to the Parking Fund. So both of those are not expected to come in at budget. The other, this is looking at the expenses for that fund. As I said, operating expenses are expected to come in slightly under budget for this fund as well. Finally, the last fund I want to talk about is the Inspections Fund, which provides for the inspections Department and all the inspections-related activities. Revenues are currently projected above, slightly above budget. And at the end of the first quarter, this fund had received 24% of its budgeted revenues and about 23% of its budget expenditures. It's currently expected to end the year with a positive budget variance, which is good news. And obviously, this is one fund that we'll be looking at throughout the fiscal year and be providing you with more information as we come back in the second quarter. This is a look at the revenues and as you can see, they're expected to come in slightly above budget with revenues. And in expenses, expected to come in slightly under budget in Personnel Services and then slightly over budget in their operating expenditures. And that's all the kind of financial information I have for you today. I just wanted to, there were a couple of other things that I just wanted to kind of bring up with council, which is that it is already time to start our FY 24 budget process. I know you all have, it seems like we just did this, but you all have received the development, budget development schedule in your packet. We will be starting out the process with a report to the city manager in December. Council budget requests will be due in January. And then we will be having budget kickoff the very first week in January with our departments. We'll be coming back to you in February and March to do some budget retreats and then some work sessions in May. And then finally, we hopefully will adopt a budget in June. So one of the other things on our, one of the other things on our plate this year is our strategic plan refresh, which I know that you've had members of our department come and present to you on. And so that will be something that we'll be working into this next year's budget process. Finally, there's some other good news in the department. I know this report, we talked a lot about vacancies, but we have closed two of our vacancies in the budget department. So I would like to take the opportunity to introduce some brand new staff to you that you'll be seeing through the budget process this year. I'm going to have them stand. The first is Phyllis Russell, who comes to us from Forsyth County and has a lot of budget experience. She'll be taking on the role of budget manager. And then the second is Llewellyn Esteban, who is a Durham resident and grew up here and so is really excited to join the team as well. So. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you. And I'll turn to my colleagues if there are any questions. I think Councilmember Caballero.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you for the report and I appreciated the budget schedule that we got in our work session as well. I will be adding all of those dates to my calendar. I know this, our first quarter, as stated, is, is the one that's the most, I guess, tenuous. So as always, just really appreciate the hard work y'all do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any of my other colleagues? Councilmember Williams?
Once again, out of 150 most populated cities in America, we are number 10 because of you all. So thank you for your leadership.
Madam Mayor.
Adding my thanks. Job well done. We have a little bit more knowledge this year thanks to the job well done last year. So looking forward to it this year. Thanks.
Thank you. And I would just say, echo my colleagues in saying this was a great report. I have one request and it's specific to the, to one of the slides that shows the increases. And just to make sure that we don't get too, I guess, excited about them, it might be helpful to have like prior year as well, so that you, at least going back to 2019. I was thinking about if you're looking at the averages over three years or over five years, just so we have some way to gauge because of COVID, everything's going to be up or down based on, you know, a very big difference, but we don't, we can't see. And I think in quarter two and three, it'll really matter. So this quarter, you know, it's kind of a general sense. But thank you. Other than that, appreciate it. And I'll turn it back over to Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you for a great presentation. At this time, we'll turn now to item number 25, Affordable Housing Deep Dive, Presentation on Planning and Development Process. And I will yield to my honorable at-large colleague, Councilmember Caballero.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem. Good to see you, Sarah. I'll pass it over to you. All right. Let me get this rolling for you. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, honorable members of council. I'm Sarah Young, Director of the City-County Planning Department. It's my pleasure to be with you this afternoon to walk you through planning in the development process, which is, can be a nebulous and frustrating thing. And so I'm going to try and break it down as, as best I can. But I want to start off first with a quick disclaimer and an acknowledgement. The disclaimer is that some of the information I'm going to be presenting to you today, you already know, right? But I am sharing it for the benefit of the viewing and listening public to make sure that they have a full context of the process. And the acknowledgement is that I have a lot of folks from other departments here with me today, depending on how deep you want the deep dive to be. I may need to call on some additional resources. I've got folks from City Public Works, City Transportation, County Erosion Control. I may be missing somebody. Our attorney's office is here as well. So with that, I want to start off first talking a bit about the Development Services Center. The DSC, as we lovingly call it, and y'all know that us planners, we love some acronyms. So I'll try and make sure to define them as we go. But the Development Services Center was opened about, hmm, almost five years ago. Its main focus was really to be the initial point of entry for the public, for the development community, to be able to walk through the development process. It's evolved quite a bit since then, mostly because of the pandemic. We had on our strategic plan, the idea that we would, over a three-year period, segue into a digital, completely digital process for submittal, review, payment, permit issuance, et cetera. And what we had planned to do in three years, the pandemic forced us to do in three weeks. So that really changed our operations significantly. Now, the, the main customer base that use our Development Services Center is really folks that are not design professionals. They don't have any real experience and have questions about, you know, something they want to do. So. Typically, the folks that we help in Development Services Center, they come to us, they know they want to do something, they don't know what it takes to do it. And they don't need to know the questions to ask. It's our job to connect the dots, to share with them the process involved, how long it's going to take, what materials they need to submit, how it's going to work, what it's going to cost, all of that, so they don't have to figure it out. And we do that right now. The center is staffed jointly by planning and inspections. Inspection staff is also here. I forgot to mention them earlier. But it is, it is really intended to be kind of the, the first point of contact for laypeople that don't understand the development process. I mean, it's our job to, to help them because like I said, it is a little bit complicated. So from a process standpoint, one of the things that is fundamental is at the entry point for anybody, you know, what do they want to do on their property, right? And, and we often get questions from folks in the community, you know, well, who gets to decide? So we start with, what, what do you want to do? Does the zoning allow that? Yes or no? If the zoning allows it and you can follow all the zoning rules, then that's what's called a by right administrative approval. Now, sometimes these by right approvals also may have some extra special standards that you have to meet. And so there could be an added quasi-judicial process. And I'm going to talk a little bit more briefly about some of these things. Now, if the zoning doesn't allow what someone wants to do, then of course, that puts them into the realm of a rezoning process, which is a legislative approval through you all. Legislative approvals, as you know, are discretionary. There are things like rezonings, annexations, plans, ordinances. Quasi-judicial approvals are evidentiary. So whereas you as council have a lot of leeway in a legislative action to approve or not approve it, in a quasi-judicial setting, there are very specific standards that need to be, to be met. Examples of some of those types of approvals are things like variances, use permits, certificates of appropriateness. And typically, these approvals are carried out by the Board of Adjustment, the Historic Preservation Commission, and sometimes you all as well. And then lastly here is administrative approvals or our administrative approvals. These are nondiscretionary and they're carried out primarily by staff. The purpose of these approvals is a bit different. It is just to verify compliance. So there's no discretion on the part of staff in these approvals, right? If someone submits a site plan, for instance, we're required to verify they meet all the standards. If they meet all the standards, by state law, we have to approve it. That also means that if, if someone refuses to comply with the standards, we can't waive. We don't have authority to waive a standard. That would put them in a process like a variance, right? Under a discretionary process that's allowed through, through state law. So a lot of times, folks will get really frustrated with an administrative approval because they want us to bend the rules and we, we really can't. Or they feel like we, you know, it shouldn't be a discretionary approval. It should be something, everything should go before the city council, right? And to give you a little context, just planning alone processes over 7,000 discrete approvals every year. You all as a council, you might see 70, right? There's a big difference. And so, so state law creates these administrative approvals for the sake of efficiency. You all can't possibly, you know, handle that, that volume of approvals. And so through the ordinance, you delegate to staff the ability to handle those essentially on your behalf. All right. So I want to talk a little bit more, segue kind of into the development process itself and some of the parts. And this kind of linear spectrum, if you will, while it kind of shows things in sequence, I want you to know that there, some of these things are not necessarily sequential, right? And not everyone needs to hit each and every one of these steps. It depends on what folks may want to do with their property, whether, you know, like I said earlier, they have the zoning they need or not. The things above the arrow, above the line are the discretionary things that involve you all or quasi-judicial process. And you'll notice that the things below the line, those are all the administrative things. And they're not all the administrative things. They're just the main ones that you are likely to hear about. There's lots of other, you know, smaller, teeny tiny things like signed permits, for instance, right? instance, right? So the other thing important about this is that each one of these represents a review cycle. Someone submits an application for any one of these things, staff reviews it. For the things that are discretionary, there's an agenda process to get it to the right body for them to consider it and make a decision. For the administrative things, there may be multiple review cycles, and each one of those is kind of a self-contained thing. So you can see how this is starting to kind of pile on, right? In addition to that, and I'll flip to the next slide, this has the same, most of the same, I think, processes, and it has the main departments that are the lead agencies for carrying out those processes. However, and sorry for the neck turning, but a lot of words to try and get on there for you. So these lead agencies, they are not the sole departments involved in these processes, right? I'll use site plans as an example. Planning may be the lead on a site plan, but we have over 20 other departments and agencies that participate with us in the review of a site plan. So a lot of these departments are involved, even though they may not be the lead, they're involved in multiple processes throughout the life of a project. All right. So I'm going to start segueing a little bit out of the nitty-gritty details of all the little development review roles, and talk a little bigger-picture roles that set the stage for things in the development review process, particularly how some of these groups that you all know are either involved in or hear about work with each other. So I want to start first with the planning department. You know, we already talked about how we handle administrative reviews, and we provide customer service, but the other big component that we contribute to the development process is, we are your main folks that draft plans, policies, regulations, for you all to enact, adopt, et cetera. There is also the Joint City/County Planning Committee, which three of you serve on, along with three county commissioners and the Chair of the Planning Commission. This is an advisory body, and the purpose of that body is to provide guidance to the planning department on matters of joint jurisdictional interest, right? We have a joint department, a joint planning function through an interlocal between the city and the county, and I'm sure I don't have to, it's an understatement to say there are things that need to be ironed out sometimes, right? We need to get on the same page with our partners at the county, and so this gives us a venue to do that. It also provides kind of the first line of guidance to staff on planning projects. And then I have the Planning Commission, who is another advisory body, but one that is very different from the JCCPC, as we like to call them. This is an advisory body that you all appoint, has 14 members, and by state law, we're required to have a planning commission if we have a zoning, if we have zoning in general, right? Their role is to hold public hearings and make a recommendation to you all, and to the county commissioners for county cases, on rezonings, plant, long-range plans, ordinance changes, those things. But as opposed to JCCPC, they do not provide guidance to staff directly, right? They're just part of a public hearing process. And then, of course, there's you all. You are the policymakers, you create the, you enact the regulations, you have, you know, your legislative powers for approvals, et cetera, and, as I mentioned, you appoint members to these bodies, which is really important. So talking about policy and regulations, I want to spend a couple of minutes talking about the difference between those things, because I think sometimes, I know I spend a lot of time explaining to community members what we mean when we say something is policy versus something is regulatory. As you know, you know, policies are non-binding, they're aspirational, right? They're the things that we would like to see happen in the future. Their purpose is to guide, but not dictate. There's no enforcement of policies. They can certainly help the city set priorities, and they really should reflect community vision, and that is a lot of what our engagement efforts are aimed at. In contrast, regulations, those are things that are legally binding. Once it's on the books, it's got to be met, okay? It's essentially a law. Their purpose is intended to implement plans, although I think sometimes, you know, we miss the mark, sometimes there's things we don't, you know, we can't necessarily do through a law, sometimes our policies are bigger, farther-reaching than just a land use ordinance. Our particular regulations deal with kind of two aspects, standards, what you have to do, you know, how something is designed, and the process, how it is that you get that design approved. And it also includes enforcement mechanisms. So kind of digging in a little bit further in terms of examples, adopted plans, we have the comprehensive plan, you know, we have a series of open space plans, we have some corridor plans, some small area plans, we even have historic preservation plans, right? Anything that is visionary, looking into the future. In terms of regulations, I think of these as kind of two buckets. One is codes and ordinances, things like city code, our unified development ordinance, and the zoning map, which is technically part of the UDO. Things like the local review criteria, building code. And then we also have what I call industry standards, right? Like the reference guide for development. So these are not codified in an ordinance, they're referenced in an ordinance, and so we use them as kind of our best industry standards to help us apply some real fine-level details that are not in the ordinance, like construction specifications, that kind of thing. All right. So an example of how all these things kind of intertwine, so for instance, there may be a policy in the comp plan or some other plan that says, "Design streets to be safe for all users," right? So how do we translate that into a regulation? Well, we may have regulations that talk about, you know, how wide the travel lane needs to be, you know, whether or not we're going to allow, you know, on-street parking or a bicycle lane, and we may have graphics that illustrate how all that works together, right? That's how one kind of evolves into the other. Now, I'm wrapping up, and I'm trying to get through this fairly quickly, because I feel like there's probably a lot of questions, but policy-wise, the comprehensive plan, the new plan that we're working on, has kind of four main areas, right? One is goals and objectives, which the council has already adopted. The other is a place type map and guide. You all are used to currently, we talk about the future land use map when you see rezoning requests. In the new iteration of the comprehensive plan, the land use, the future land use map will be replaced by a place type guide, same idea. But it will describe the different types of uses in very general, broad categories, and where it is envisioned that they will come, be realized on the ground in our community. It also has, or will have, a series of policies, just like the old plan did, and these are recommendations for how it is that we're going to reach those goals and objectives that were laid out. And then the last thing, which is really important, is it will contain a series of action items and an implementation framework. And up until now, everything that I have just talked about, the goals and objectives which were adopted, the draft map, and the draft policies, those are available online. I know many, most of you know that. The implementation framework and the action items is something that we're working on now, will be released with our next release, the final release that I'll talk about in a minute. Those are where we're going to detail essentially all the homework assignments, the things that we need to do, whether it be projects, new programs, research, what have you, to try and implement the policies that are in the plan. And then the implementation framework is basically the assignment list. Who's lead on what? Who needs to be involved? What resources are needed to do some of those things? So that's, big picture, kind of what the comprehensive plan covers. Now, big picture, what the unified development ordinance covers, and I know Don O'Toole, I think, talked about this a little bit in his presentation last time. The UDO, it codifies two things, basically, administrative procedures, how processes work, how you, you know, the type of application you need, the responsibilities of different entities, public notice requirements, how we do enforcement. It also, and more importantly, I think, codifies development standards. This is the part that people care about the most, which is, what do you actually have to do, right? What are the rules for development? Most of them are organized by zoning district, and they cover all sorts of things, including, you know, the use, what you can do on the property, the building size, scale, mass, site design, you know, where you put parking, and environmental protection, the things that are really concerning to a lot of folks. They are, they seem to never be convinced that we've done, that they're covered in the ordinance, but we have several chapters devoted to a variety of different environmental protections built into the ordinance. So it's not just land use, it's also an environmental ordinance as well. So I want to wrap up kind of the formal part of the presentation with a bit of an update on where we are with these two really important documents that guide development in Durham. The comprehensive plan, the full draft will be available in January. We're going to start our final round of community engagement in January. We hope to be at Planning Commission to start the public hearing process with them in February. We are not quite sure how long that will take, and unlike a rezoning request, the Planning Commission is not bound by law to move this item along by any certain deadline. So, you know, we're anticipating that it will likely be with them for a few months, but we're not 100% sure. We would like to be able to get this to you all and the county commissioners in a joint hearing for adoption in the summer. So that's what we're shooting for. But as exciting as it is to wrap up a new comprehensive plan, I'm even more excited about the next phase, which is a complete rewrite of our unified development ordinance. And that's needed for a variety of reasons. One is, you know, we're going to have a new place type map that requires new zoning districts that implement it, requires lots of other changes, regulatory changes to implement a lot of the policies. And so we will be issuing an RFP for a couple of things, and we thought we were going to do this separately, but I think we're probably going to end up doing this together, is this winter, looking for a consultant to basically take a deep dive at our ordinance, you know, tell us, you know, what is keeping us from meeting the policies in the comp plan? You know, what are the hurdles in the ordinance? What are the things that need to be deconstructed and reconstructed? And then start drafting that. So the first phase will likely be kind of a deep dive into the ordinance to see all the things that, you know, are wrong with it, that could be better, that we would like to see changed, and then the rewrite will start from that. So with that, I know that was a lot of really fast talking, which I apologize for, but I wanted to make sure that I got through it and you all had time for questions.
Open up to questions. Any colleagues have any questions? I'm going to start with Councilmember Freeman, and I'll just go down.
And thank you, Sarah. This is phenomenal to actually present and share with the public in this format, and I think it's long overdue. I'm so thankful that you've put it together. I would add that, or just ask if you could add some dates to some of the slides, because I think it's helpful for folks to understand how long some of the items have been outstanding, especially in that one slide where you're talking about the comp plan. And I would say that it's important to also note that we live in a Dillon Rule state, and so many of the things that we request are voluntary, whereas in other states, it might not be. And I think it's important to note that the policy that prevents sound planning and zoning, based on a meticulous eye for those types of details, creates opportunities to incorporate resident requests, listening to concerns raised by residents, and then trying to make sure we're avoiding critical harms that we know have been a part of development for, you know, thousands, just thinking about chemicals in general and how they're used. There's just been some changes that we kind of have to account for, and so I know, just even talking about the way in which we're setting up the burns, or setting up different ways to prevent, you know, runoff, those are all things that are happening like real time. And so we cannot, it's, nothing is static, and I really want to express like over and over again, nothing is static. And so what we know in 2022 may be different in 2023. And that's important in this policy development conversation, so that the policies have to be alive. It's not something that can just sit and, you know, or just stand there, which is why we want the plans to be reflective. And so I think it's important to note that this, the UDO and the comprehensive plan were items that were developed prior to me being on council, and so it's hard to be guided by. Okay. I did want to just touch on, I think there was one question, the hours of operation and languages spoken in the development center, because I think that's important for the public to understand as well.
Sure. We are open every day Monday through Friday, 9 to 3, and we have, primary staff does speak English, however, through our language line service, we are able to connect folks and translate to, I forget how many, it's like 200 languages, something like that. We also have native and bilingual Spanish speakers in the department, and often when they are there, we prefer to reach out to them and have them interact as opposed to, you know, doing the phone or kind of video interface. It just feels a little more personable to be able to have a live person there, so sometimes that happens as well.
Thank you. That's all my questions and comments.
Thank you. Mayor Protem? Do you have anything? No? Okay. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you. And thank you, Sarah. This was really helpful. I kind of want to like post this entire thing to Twitter. Maybe Leo and I will take turns posting screenshots of the presentation. I wanted to ask you whether there are things in the upcoming, I'm sure there are, what things in the upcoming UDO rewrite do you anticipate bringing forward to specifically help with the issue of affordability? There are, you know, a million things that we need to do, but given that, you know, we're trying to figure, that affordable housing is one of the most pressing things we're trying to figure out, and during this like deep dive series, what pieces of that, or in the comp plan, you know, just like what do you think might lead us towards policies that would help us get more affordable housing?
That's a great question. That's one of the reasons that we wanted to have someone, a consultant, you know, sometimes when you're too close and you've been looking at something for too long, you stop seeing, like you miss things, right? And so we wanted to have a fresh set of eyes to help us do that kind of critical deconstruction, like what is really, you know, we don't have, we just recently started having some projects take advantage of the affordable housing bonus, which in addition to, I know Attorney O'Toole covered it in his presentation, you know, we're allowed by charter to give a density bonus and other things of value, right? So we also essentially give a parking bonus. You don't have to provide parking for affordable units. We give a height bonus. So we give some other things in the ordinance, but even with all that, you know, we really don't get a lot of takers. And we have tried, those of you that have, you know, may remember, we've revised the bonus several times, each time trying to make it a little more appealing, a little more enticing, but we still are not really getting a lot of takers. And we suspected that that was going to be the case early on. It's a problem that is more than just land use can fix, right? But land use certainly contributes, land use regulation contributes to it. And so that's one of the things that I'm actually looking forward to, maybe getting some fresh ideas, and getting some folks that have done some work in other parts of the country that maybe have been more successful and can bring us additional body of research. We often hear folks say, you know, the, you know, the process is too expensive or too long, and time is money, and those are certainly things that we can adjust. We already prioritize in the development review process affordable housing projects, so that's not projects that are proffering donation, projects that are actually proposing and building units. We provide those a priority review that's quicker than other things, so just like we do for a few other specific types of development. So we've done that. We need to be careful, of course, because some of the things have been asked of us by the development community are not things that we are able to do by law. So for instance, and I think that this was talked about before, you know, there may be, we can't waive a fee, right? And so we need to look at other ways, if a fee is a barrier, to try and get folks across the finish line so they can build a project. But I don't have a direct answer for, if I had the magic answer, we'd be in a lot better place, but I don't. So that's one of the things I'm looking forward to diving in a little deeper myself.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm looking forward to that a lot as well. And yeah, I mean, there, I'm sure there are more things that we can do. I'm sure a lot of the things that people want us to do, as you said, are not doable as well, but I, the intersection of the things that we can do and the things that are doable, I'm hoping is very significant, and we can, we can move forward with some of those things. The density bonus is one of the things that, yeah, I mean, since I've been on council, I think we've changed it three times, and we still have not, you know, been able to get people to really, to really have not, you know, been able to get people to really, to really jump on that. Yeah, which is disappointing, but we're dealing with market pressures. We're dealing with, you know, profit motivated developers. Like, there's just, there's a lot of things that are out of our hands. But I'm hopeful that this process will allow us to, you know, make whatever changes that are in our hands to do our part to try to, yeah, create as much affordability as we can. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams, and the mayor, and then Mayor Protam.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Johnson just hit the nail on the head with my main question. What can we do and how big can we do it? So I'll ask the smaller questions. In regards of the source of funding for planning, the planning department, is that just solely a development fees or application fees? Or is there, how do we fund this effort?
The planning department is funded essentially, one third of our funding comes from fees, from fee revenues, and another third from the city general fund, and another third from county general fund. So that's essentially how the breakdown works.
Okay, thank you. So, well, maybe this is my biggest question. We are, you know, just community members who run for office, and we say, hey, I want to fight for my community. We want to stand up and represent, da-da-da-da-da. And we have all the ideas in the world, because we're the smartest people ever. And then we run for office, and we get here with a reality check. And it's all opinion until we understand what the heck we're talking about. Do we foresee any type of metric that could give us, any type of metric of guidance or any type of guidelines that can help us, whether we're on Planning Commission, or council, or Board of Adjustments, or just any type of, I don't want to drive by and say, wow, look at the grass, it's high. The city doesn't care about us. You know, is there anything, when these cases are coming before us, a metric that helps us, you know, assess whether we should, you know, whether we should pass it or not? You know, like, I'm going to base my assessment logically based on these parameters.
So that, that really is the purpose of the comprehensive plan, right? And we're in the weird kind of in-between right now, where we don't have, we have a very limited comprehensive plan. When the goals and objectives for the new one were adopted, along with that came a recension of all but three policies. I had to check and make sure I was holding up the right number of fingers. Three policies from the old comp plan. So all the other policies no longer exist. So we're in this weird phase right now. The only guidance are these very broad overarching goals and objectives. And you'll, you know, you'll see that in our staff report, we try and do our best to say how it meets it. But they're broad. And so that's not a lot to go on. When the comprehensive plan is finally finished, it will have, I think, just under 200 policies. Of course, not all of them will apply directly to a rezoning, for instance, but it will be very clear which ones do, and the staff analysis will reference those. And that is something that you all can use to kind of, you know, inform your thinking. Of course, again, it's just policy guidance. It's not, you know, required to be adhered to, but that's the idea.
Thank you. And lastly, do, in your opinion, do you foresee the comprehensive plan keeping up with the trends of our growth?
Yeah. And I think the other thing that's really important about that is, we, unfortunately, we're not able to update the comprehensive plan fast enough, right? And so what we've seen happen is, there's a big lag time. Our old comp plan is way out of date, right? It was adopted in 2005, and it had a minor amendment, a few minor amendments done to it, but nothing substantial. So typically, it's best practice to update your comprehensive plan every five years, like, do a whole full update, which we're far behind. So our plan moving forward is to do more regular updates at two-year intervals so that we don't get behind. So you will see that as one of the administrative policies that is in the plan, recommending that that is the interval that we do that at.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cabeira. I just want to spend a couple of moments, Sarah, and thank you for all the work that you all are doing in your department, trying to get a feel for what I've been hearing from the community probably since running in the election. And then, as Councilman Williams said, once you get here, then you're kind of faced up with the reality of trying to learn a system and put in context the things that we've heard. So kind of two areas I want to try to delve in. And when I've talked to the development community, one of the things that I have heard over and over again is the amount of time that it takes for a project to move through the planning process. And along with that, that there's, the secondary part of that is that supposedly, in many instances, we are slower than other communities around us. And I'm just wondering, how do you dispel that perception with, you know, are there ways that one can measure yourself in terms of timing with other counties, you know, and whatever parameters there are? Are there actually measurements or ways that we could do that to see if that's a myth? Or if there's some truth to that? Because I can't ever seem to get past that. They moved, Durham really moved slow in comparison to other counties. It takes two years. And if they would just do something about the timing, you know, we may be able to deal with some of the affordability issues. So how do we address that in the community? For instance, with the auditor, the audit department being audited by outsiders who come in and say, okay, they're doing well. Is there a counterpart or something similar that the planning department can use to assess its timing in regards to that?
So Mayor, that is one of my favorite questions that I get. If you'll recall, you know, all the different processes that I showed on the slide, they have different review timeframes, right? So for something really simple, it might be a five-day review, right? For something more complicated, like a big site plan or a rezoning, the initial review may be three weeks, right? At that point, applicants get 90 days, or in some cases, 180 days by law, to resubmit, to make those corrections and resubmit to us. When it comes back in, staff does another two-week review, so shorter review than the first time around. And that cycle continues to repeat until they have addressed all the technical comments. So we do track how long it takes staff, whether staff is on time with those reviews. And it's very common for me to receive, you know, complaints from folks, you know, why is my project taking so long? So one of the first things I do is I pull the data. You know, it was in staff's hands these many days. It was in your consultant's hands for, you know, these many weeks, months, et cetera. And that is, there's a lot of factors involved in that, right? I'm not trying to kind of throw consultants under the bus as a general thing. They, there's a lot of work right now, and I think a lot of folks are in the private sector, just kind of tapped out. And so they're not doing as great a job as they used to on submittals, because they're just trying to keep, you know, all their balls juggling for their clients. We've seen the quality of submittals has really dropped in the past few years. And so that means more re-reviews. Folks are, a lot of times, they're maxing out their timeframe to resubmit. They're asking for extensions sometimes. Sometimes weird things happen in a case, particularly like rezoning cases and exsection cases. There's a lot of ownership issues. You all saw some of that play out last night. And so some of that is outside of staff's control. And then there's also kind of the practical nature of, there's a finite number of public hearing slots that we can, you know, calendar things for. And honestly, we are having kind of the highest caseload that we've had for a number of case types, including rezonings, in a long time. So all those things together kind of put the perfect storm. But we, you know, we certainly do track the amount of time that a project, you really have to look at how much time it was in staff's hands versus in the consultant's hands. And it may take two years, but if there was only three staff reviews, that's really only, you know, what, maybe three months total in staff time? And the rest is, you know, stuff that goes on in the consultant world with their project. So it's a little bit of a complicated question. We do, we have been looking, honestly, at some ways that we can potentially streamline some things. For instance, on rezonings, we no longer continue the re-review cycle until a project is completely clean, because they do have to come in for site plan. So we basically, two or three reviews, and that's it. You're going to council. Ready or not, here you come, right? And that has helped some. That has also made the problem worse, because we have more cases that are ready to be heard now. So, did that answer your question?
Yes. I wanted to give you an opportunity to kind of address that in this public space so that folk kind of begin to, that we all begin to understand. And it's a little bit more complex than making blanket statements. The second part of it, or the other end, and of course, as governments, we are used to being, bearing the brunt of the, paying for all things wrong and making all things right. So wanted to kind of pivot to the community end. And the things that I've heard in the community is, you know, the perception that somehow or another, our planning department is pro-development, and all of these things that are being built are basically because somehow or another, it's being done from your office, or if not, your office at the city council level. So, you know, when you talk to people, it's like, you know, wow, we keep talking about walkable communities, but we really don't have them. We're watching, I think one of the emails I got last week was in reference to, we don't want to look like New York. We're watching all these apartments go up, and we don't want to look like New York. And all of these buildings are being torn down, you know, we're losing public hardware, we're losing Los Primos. And what are you all doing to kind of stop these things? And, you know, you're building for the people that are coming into Durham, and you're not caring about people who are already in Durham. Why is it that we don't have, you know, more retail approved? Just kind of all of these blanket kinds of statements that are coming in from the community end. And I just want to give you a space to kind of talk about some of that in terms of how, you know, how we're seeing, what we're seeing, and how that kind of plays out, and a lot of it being kind of out of our hands.
Yeah, I think that's one of the biggest misconceptions about planning in general. We try to be visionary and put ideas forward with the community about what this place could look like in some future, but we cannot dictate that. And, you know, land use in general in this country is set up with a lot of by right provisions, right? There's this really popular thing in this country called property rights. And so if you've got, if your property is zoned, you know, however your property is zoned, if you want to do something that conforms with that, that's your right to do so. We, you know, like I said earlier, we have a lot of folks that have reached out to us and you all, you know, oh, how can this possibly be approved? You evil, evil planning department, you, you know, this should really go before council. Well, not everything can go before council. And so, you know, staff has worked with our elected officials of the past and will continue to do so, to right-size the things in the ordinance that really rise to the level of approval of this body versus what can be administratively efficiently handled as a by right approval. The idea that never brings any consolation to anybody, but is the truth, is that at the time the rules are written in the ordinance, right, there's a public hearing. And, you know, all that is aired publicly in terms of what the rules are going to be and what people, you know, may expect to see in the future. The problem with that is that it's really hard for the average person to understand what these rules mean and how they might play out. One of the things that I want to look to do in this next rewrite of the UDO is to break it down into easier to understand language in general, so the ordinance itself is not so dense. I mean, the ordinance confuses some of my staff. That's not helpful, right? But I want it to be more plain language, easier for the average person to understand, so it's more clear what we might see in the future. We're also going to be doing a much deeper job of engagement. I was actually on the team of folks when the current UDO was adopted back in 2006. I had phone duty, y'all, taking questions literally day and night for a couple of months, myself and Mike Stock, answering all sorts of questions from the community, because we sent a letter to every single property owner in the entire county. Whew, talk about exhausting. But we did, we really did not do the type of engagement, I think that we will, you know, that's expected today, right? We've evolved in terms of considerations about equity, considerations about accessibility of our regulations. So I'm hoping that this time around, we'll do, we'll be able to do a better job in reaching and educating folks as to what they may see. But again, it's really challenging, because it's dense, boring stuff.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabeira. And thank you, colleagues, for the excellent conversation. Thank you, Mayor, for putting this deep dive into our culture. Firstly, I want to say, I think I've been on the Joint City Committee, Joint City-City Planning Committee since I've been on council, and I've, in just a few more weeks, I'll be chair of it. So I've sat through a lot of primers on planning. This by far is one of the best, most accessible primers on planning. I'm talking about me, if, I don't want to say planning for dummies, but I'm the dummy. So this is one of the most accessible pri, and my colleagues were kind of joking about putting it on Twitter, but that may be something you really should consider. This is one of the best. So thank you for this. Councilmember Johnson jogged my memory about something when she asked about something that we can tangibly do. And I want to talk about a resident citizen generated initiative that's going on, that the JCC's been talking about, JCCPC's been talking about. But firstly, you know, with respect to us taking our time in Durham, and these developers ain't loyal, because they say the same things. I talk to colleagues from around the country all the time, and they say the same thing. Y'all should be more like Durham. When they're talking to Durham, you should be more like Raleigh and Charlotte. I hear the same thing from all of our colleagues. When you're trying to get that bag, no time is quick enough for you. The other thing, Durham's not fast food. You want to compare us to other cities, they ain't hot like us. Part of our backlog is because everybody wants to be here. We are it right now. So that's why there's a line. You call a hot restaurant, they tell you the reservation is, and this isn't an excuse. And I'm glad that you're still working on efficiencies and working on streamlining it. But the reality is, many of them, not all of them, say the same thing to everybody. And secondly, Durham's hot. Ain't nobody coming to see you, Otis, in these other cities. So that's who we are right now. To Councilmember Johnson's point, a question, a query about what's being done, there's a, and Councilmember Williams, I remember you talked about, asked a question about NPOs, that are, these things that are resident and citizen-driven and initiated. Oftentimes, the best ideas come from them. There's a group now that has put forward some text amendments to the UDO to relax the ability of faith, houses of faith and worship, places of worship, to use land that they're not using to do affordable housing. One of the things, these places, because of the relaxed taxation statuses and not-for-profit statuses of these institutions, many of them have large pieces of land that are just sitting there. And some, there are some residents and citizens that are moving to relax conditions around them to do affordable housing on large tracts of land. So that's something that I would ask my colleagues to be on the lookout for coming down the pipeline. You know, not, this isn't, has nothing to do with dogma or their, or their, you know, teachings or whatever. This is purely using land that they hold to do affordable housing and to ease some of the supply pressures we have in the city. So that's one thing specifically that we can look to, that, again, it's not an idea that came from the government, but an idea coming from residents and citizens. So I would just put that on my colleagues' radar as we look at rewriting the UDO and look at creative, new, fresh initiatives and ways we can deal with affordable housing in our city. Thank you so much. This is a great presentation. I appreciate you. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. Councilmember Cabeiro. I did, just hearing some of my colleagues' comments, I did want to just circle back a little bit on, one of the things you mentioned was a priority review for units. I do want to make sure that there's a unit minimum or some type of percentage tied to that because I don't think that if you add one unit or six units or four units, it should be tied to however many units that you can, you know, kind of put in in some way, shape or form, whether it's 5, 10, or 15%. And that's just my opinion. I think my colleagues will have to weigh in on that. And I do think that that faith in ministry or relaxing of zoning is a great idea, especially for affordable housing. I would add that additional services might be around homelessness or other, other services that are provided to our community that are benefit or childcare. I did note that during COVID, I know that we did add an additional meeting previously and it may be time to do that just to clear the queue out because I do know that sometimes it does get backed up. And where we've had two years of a shutdown, I think it's, it's important to note that this is specifically a different situation, not just a general like backing up. So if we do need to figure out a date, I think we've been doing this Tuesday off of, you know, the Monday off, if we need to figure out a Tuesday that works, I think that's a good, a good way to kind of clear your queue. A Tuesday evening that works, that would be helpful so that you have the public hearing and hear the cases in the same way we do on Monday. And then it probably would be helpful to see what it looks like on the revenue side, that one-third. If there's a way to, I don't know if our finance department could flag for us in our, I guess in our budget review, I think for quarter two, what that looks like. Because if we are off, if we're not having development funding coming in enough, then we need to do something, then we need to know that. That, I think that would be helpful in our budget conversation. And one more thing was, can you encourage team submissions for the RFP that you're doing for the UDO or break out the community engagement aspect so that we can get some of the smaller, more local, homegrown folks involved in that work? Because I think that's been helpful in some of the work that's happened. That's all. Thank you.
Can I chime in on that? We, it's been our intent to do a separate RFP for the engagement. So, you know, it's one thing to have technical experts that know how to write code and can dive into research, but usually they are not the same folks that have deep expertise in really engaging a local community. And so we, our plan is to do that separately, but have them work together. So.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, I have a couple or just some comments. First of all, great presentation. I really appreciate all my council colleagues' comments and questions. I just wanted to say that I am married to someone who very much knows a lot about the planning department. And I will say that he works across the state and he always has a very high opinion. And I just want to extend a lot of gratitude for staff for the professionalism extended. I have overheard plenty of Zooms in my house and I know that there's sometimes some snarkiness out in the community, but I do want to say that we have some top-notch staff in Durham and we should extend some gratitude because we, we've had a lot of vacancies in this department. Durham is not a cheap place to live. I know we're struggling across the city fulfilling some of these vacancies because folks can't move and, and buy a house here anymore, even on a planner's salary, which is a pretty good job. And so for the, for our residents, we're all struggling with the growth. We all, you know, have nostalgia about how things maybe were and how things are changing quickly. But we do owe it to our staff to acknowledge their expertise and their great customer service. So I just want to applaud you and all of your staff. I hope that my colleagues who are much better at Twitter than I am decide to stick this out there because it was a great tool. And I look forward, I do think the UDO needs to be not the way it is right now so that folks can really understand it and feel, you know, more a part of what the built environment in Durham looks like. Thank you, and I hope you and your family have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you. You as well.
Unless anyone else has any questions or more comments, I think this presentation is done and I will pass the mic back.
Thank you, Councilmember. Your Honor, the only matters that remain before us are a report from the clerk on an appointment, settling of the agenda. Then I'll yield the gavel to, for us to go into our closed session, which we already voted on. Madam Clerk?
I only have one nomination and it's to the Durham Open Space and Trails Commission. And it's for the category of at-large. The nomination is for Melissa Southern, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. I'll yield to the manager now for settling the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. So the agenda this evening on consent, we have items one through five and seven through 23. On the general business agenda, we have item six. And for public hearings, we have items 26 through 30.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I yield back to you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all. I truly want to say thank you to my colleagues today and for the last couple of weeks that we've been experimenting with each of us handling different parts of the agenda. And if you notice, our meetings are getting shorter for some other, for some reason. I'm going to attribute it to that. But at any rate, I think at our next city council meeting, Mayor Protam and I will not be here. And so our two senior leaders, I think that will be Councilwoman Johnson and Councilwoman Cabeiro, or Councilmember Freeman, will decide how that meeting is run. We'll leave it in their capable hands. I do want to say thank you to all of our staff who worked so hard over the last year. We'll be coming up, I'll be coming up on a one-year anniversary on December 6th. I'll be on travel for the city. It's really been a great year and I look forward to all of the things that we're going to be doing in 2023. I would be remiss, though, however, as your mayor, to not remind, to remind you of while we're doing this deep dive in housing and while we are trying to deal with some of the issues that have come before us in terms of violent crime, there is a nexus between a lack of housing and, and the availability of the opportunity to commit crimes to make a living. The demographic that we hear about and see so often has not changed. It's been that way ever since I hit the bench in 1994. Young African-American males who began to feel hopeless as they figure out that they really don't have a place in American society. And that is not unique to Durham. That is going on all across this nation as we are continually faced with the trauma of young black lives being lost in our country. What is unique about Durham is that we have the expertise and the ability to do something about it and not just rely on law enforcement. And so as we roll out today, as we try as public officials to do the very best that we can, is that we gather to celebrate Thanksgiving and we have much to be grateful for, I would implore all of our Durham residents to take a look around you and see those people who are struggling and who have no homes and who have access to guns even from some of our cars that we are leaving unlocked. And they are watching the growth in this city and they have lost hope. Let us be the community that sets a new standard. Let us not let greed outweigh our need to have our young folk and older folk have their basic life services met, the ability to live, work, and play successfully in Durham. So we lift up those communities as we enter into this holiday season and let us see what we can do together to make a difference in a real way for our most marginalized and vulnerable communities. With that being said, Bull City Strong, we are journeying to closed session at 4:38. Reach out.